Right, just some administrative matters to begin with.
Yes.
There's some further documents for tender.
Yes.
To arising from Mr. Mallard's further evidence and a separate list of evidence arising from Robert Bennett's evidence. Can I hand up the usual two schedules and also, excuse me, an amended index to exhibit TV eight?
The amended index to TV eight, general exhibits two as of four December 2025 at nine twenty eight AM will be MFI forty one. The documents in the list headed Robert Bennett's evidence documents for tender by council assisting will have the exhibit numbers attributed to them in that list. And the documents in the list handed up this morning headed Fane Mallard's further evidence documents with tender by council assisting will have the exhibit numbers attributed to them in that list. And ready for council on the noon?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, councillor. Just come forward and we might have you re sworn, given it's been a few days since you were last here. Yes. I do. Thank you. Yes, Miss McDonald.
Mr. Manoon, as the mayor of the council, you are the one who usually chairs council meetings.
Yes.
And in chairing council meetings, do you attempt to ensure that decisions made by the council are made in a way that is open and accountable?
Yes.
That decisions are based on relevant quality information?
Yes.
That during the meetings, you and councillors treat each other with respect?
Yes.
And do you maintain that the meetings that you chair are well organised, effectively run and skillfully chaired?
Yes.
In treating your fellow councillors with respect during meetings, that would include not treating any councillors in a condescending fashion?
Yes.
Not in a patronising fashion?
Yes.
Being polite?
Yes.
As your role of the chair of the meeting, you also have the ability to not allow a motion on the basis that it's unlawful?
Yes.
When you do that, how do you determine whether the motion is lawful or not, in your opinion?
The first step, the first gateway in question to lawfulness happens prior to the council meeting with the CEO. It's their responsibility to prepare the agenda and rule out any motions that they believe are unlawful. Now, then during the council meeting, the responsibility then falls on myself as the chair of the meeting. Now, ultimately, it's a matter of experience and looking at the motion, subject to what the particular motion may be. And then if I believe there is an element of unlawfulness to it, I then have to allow the mover of the motion, the opportunity to make it lawful.
Um.
And so, and there is from time to time, potential consultation with the general counsel at the council meeting.
In part of that answer, you said, when you're the chair, if there is a motion where you believe it to be unlawful, how do you determine your belief that it's unlawful? You've spoken about experience. You've spoken about sometimes there's consultation with the general counsel. But other than that, is there any other way?
The being in the role of a chair requires one to have a, to make decisions in a timely fashion with regards to implementation of abundances of policies and legislation and understanding the rules of local government. So from that, if something I believe needs further inquiry, then, and further, I may pause for a moment, ponder on the matter, see what advice is available to me, any research I need to do, and then make a decision on that.
Well, I said to you, other than consulting with the general counsel and also in the absence of the CEO noting any issue with the notice of motion, it's a matter of you pausing, pondering and then making your determination.
Yes.
Do you always refer to the general counsel?
No.
What determines whether you refer to the general counsel?
Complexity. And a lot of the time is councillors wanting to refer to the general counsel and seek an opinion.
Right, but I'm focusing on what you do. So when you would refer to the general counsel, you've nominated where an issue of complexity arises?
Yes.
Any others? So your answer is you don't always refer it to the general counsel. But if it is an issue, if the issue that arises is one of complexity, you would refer it to the general counsel?
Yes.
Any other circumstances in which you would refer it to the general counsel?
Complexity, if I'm not sure. I guess the general terms of when somebody needs advice, you would seek advice.
I'm just trying to work out, do you have the resource of the general counsel usually at every council meeting?
Yes.
Or if Mr. Garpin isn't available, there would be another senior member of your legal, of the council's legal team present?
Yes.
I'm just trying to work out, in addition to issues of complexity, when you would turn to the general counsel or his representative to seek advice?
Yep. There are circumstances prior to the council meeting where if I foresee potentially something coming, then I may also run a scenario past the general counsel.
And what's the general counsel's advice?
Yes.
And the advice from the general counsel, is that then distributed or provided in some way to your fellow councillors?
No, not in usual circumstances. We've had examples in recent times where calling extraordinary meetings and having motions or extraordinary meetings where we've had to seek general counsel and then external advice, and that was circulated to councillors.
There's a number of examples in the material before this inquiry where advice has been obtained and that is provided to your fellow councillors.
Yes.
For example, the advice from Mr. Hodgkinson, the senior counsel dealing with workhorse and safety.
Yes.
That's one example of where the legal advice obtained was distributed to all councillors.
Yes, and I got that legal advice from my role as a director of LGNSW and forward did that. I actually provided that to council.
But if you can listen to my questions, that is an example of it being distributed to your fellow councillors.
Yes.
And the examples that you just gave of extraordinary meetings held this year in September and October, where I think some legal advice was obtained from an external, at least one external firm, may have been a second external firm?
Oh, one from my recollection, but two pieces of advice.
Two pieces of advice. And both those pieces of advice were distributed to your fellow councillors?
Yes.
So, and there is merit in that example, in that distribution of advice to your fellow councillors in that they can read it beforehand, understand what the basis of concern or illegality is, and then would, and that would be providing to them relevant quality information, wouldn't it?
Provides them, but it depends on what they do with it.
Well, that's not my question. Providing such legal advice is you're providing to your fellow councillors relevant quality information, aren't you?
Yes.
And regardless of what they do with it, that should form the basis of providing to your fellow councillors relevant information, which should then ground the decisions made by the council?
Yes.
And so the provision of legal advice that has been obtained isn't something that's unusual?
So what was the question?
Provision of legal advice obtained from an outside firm or a barrister and providing that to your fellow councillors, that's not an unusual step, is it?
It happens from time to time, yes.
As the mayor, you are bound by the various policies of the council, including the relevant policies dealing with information provided to councillors and interaction with staff?
Yes.
Also, excuse, I withdraw that. In using the resources of council, you must use them for the purposes of your civic duty?
Yes.
Not for party political purposes?
Yes.
And you must be scrupulous in the way that you use council resources?
Yes.
You must not use them for private purposes?
Yes.
Last week I was asking you some questions about Joe Canavo and his company's Icon Properties and Canavo Investments.
Yes.
You had performed work for Mr. Canavo and his companies.
Yes.
When did you provide that work?
Approximately October, towards the end of two thousand and twenty one.
What work did you do for him?
Provided advice regarding leasing options for his property.
Which property?
The one that I know as, well, De Roust, I don't know the exact address of it, I think it's three thirty or three sixty Macquarie Street. The former chicken shop.
I'm sorry, I just lost that last bit?
The former chicken shop.
The former chicken shop.
You also assisted him in respect of his application for a development approval?
No.
Excuse me for a minute. You have had, just before December twenty twenty one, you have been discussing with him ways to solve the problem with the development of his property at three sixty Macquarie Street.
I don't understand what you mean by ways to solve the problem.
Well, he wanted to develop that property?
No.
He applied in two thousand and sixteen for a concept approval?
Yes.
That approval was granted in June two thousand and nineteen?
Yes.
And after that, a further approval for, in the form of a development application was, I'm sorry, I'll withdraw that question. Mr. Canavo was looking for a further approval, that is a development application, after he had received the concept approval?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That's new to you, is it?
Yes. My understanding is only a logical concept approval.
I'm sorry?
But my understanding is only logical concept approval and no actual DA.
No, I didn't ask you that. You agree, we've established, you knew that he sought and was granted a concept approval?
Yes.
What I was saying to you is that Mr. Canavo was then looking at lodging a further development application so that he could develop the particular site. And you knew that?
Uh, no.
That he was looking to do that?
That he was looking at doing that?
Yeah.
I never saw any circumstances or actions that indicated that.
Okay, but my question was broader than that. Did Mr. Canavo, before December twenty twenty one, discuss that with you?
It may, it came up, I think, in the discussions we're having about selling his property because he was trying to sell it. And I remember trying to sell it for him and it was around, I think along the lines of would it add value if there actually was a DA approval versus what he had, which was a council approval, which didn't allow any development?
So you did have that discussion with Mr. Canavo?
In a very light term, yes.
In a very what?
Light, as in a variable with regards to, you know, would this add value to my property when I'm going to sell it? When he said I'm seventy years old and I'm not going to develop it, I want to sell this property. Would it add value if I had a DA approval versus a master plan, which is what he had approved, a concept which actually did not allow any development?
So what's the significance of a concept plan?
Under the amendment fifty two, the concept DA would allow a site, if it met the criteria, to have a ten to one zoning on it and versus a three to one, so it was made for the larger sites. But you had to go through that process, it wasn't a given versus just doing a blanket, here's your zoning and height. So you'd have to have the concept approval first, then from that, you can then move on to a development application.
So it's a gateway step. If you don't get through that, there's not much point in lodging a development application.
Correct.
Have you ever disclosed to anybody within Liverpool City Council the work that you had performed for Mr. Canavo and all his properties before you became mayor in December twenty twenty one?
Sorry, did I disclose before December twenty?
No, after. After you became mayor, have you disclosed it to anybody?
Yes.
Who did you disclose it to?
From my recollection, I think it was with Mr. Ajaka?
When?
I think there was a meeting once between Mr. Ajaka and Mr. Canavo. I'm just trying to think, I wasn't involved or anything, but I think at that point.
You were involved?
I'm just trying to think if I was involved or not. I don't remember being involved now.
Well, my question was, when did you disclose it to Mr. Ajaka? You've just referred to a meeting you don't remember attending between Mr. Canavo and Mr. Ajaka. When did you disclose, are you saying you disclosed it to Mr. Ajaka? When did you disclose it to Mr. Ajaka?
Sometime in twenty three, two thousand and twenty three?
And how did you disclose it?
Verbally.
Nothing in writing?
No, but I remember telling Mr. Ajaka, saying that, you know, I'm just letting you know, I've done work for Mr. Canavo in the past, can you please note it down as part of your file records?
Right. Other than putting the responsibility on Mr. Ajaka, you didn't record it in writing anywhere?
No.
Do you remember how it came up?
There was, I think Mr. Canavo wanted to have a meeting with the CEO and I informed Mr. Ajaka, this person would like to meet with you, gave him a rundown of the history of the issue over the last, what was it at that time, twenty plus years? I told him about it and then just saying to him that, yes, I've done, I've done it and then they, as in I've done work for him, therefore he's aware of it, I've noted it down, but I had no further involvement in the situation.
Do you remember how you came to be aware that Mr. Canavo wanted to meet with the CEO?
He asked me, he wanted.
Mr. Canavo approached you?
Wanted me to organise it.
You said this was sometime in twenty twenty three?
Yes.
Roughly when?
Don't remember.
Before, and sorry, in answer to the commissioner's question, are you saying Mr. Canavo contacted you directly? Or did he ask Mr. Ajaka to get you to attend the meeting?
My recollection is he contacted me.
Mr. Canavo contacted you?
Yes.
And that was sometime in twenty twenty three?
Yes.
Before that contact, and he contacted you at all in twenty twenty two?
Uh, yes.
When did he contact you in twenty twenty two?
I'm, I'm not sure.
At what form did the contact take?
Phone call.
And did it lead to anything?
I think him and I catching up, yes.
When did you catch up? Oh, sorry, did you catch up?
Yes.
When?
I don't remember the month, but sometime in that, sometime in that period.
What period?
Twenty two, twenty three.
Was this an unofficial catch up?
I don't know the distinction between unofficial or official.
Well, did he come into council offices, Mr. Canavo?
Not exactly sure.
And what did you discuss?
Mr. Canav, he, once again, he's interested in his issue that he had for going for a long time in the area and generally about the future of Liverpool. I know he was critical of the council chambers that we were spending money on.
And the issue that he was raising, oh, the issues that he was raising included the issue that he alleges that he was, it was represented to him that there would be some extension of Bathurst Street that would assist the development of his property.
So when is that question, when you're asking?
Well, you said that you had a catch up with him and the issues were raised?
Yes.
One of the issues that he's been raising with you is alleged representations made to him whereby the council would extend the road from Bathurst Street to Terminus Street, which would assist the development of his property?
Yeah, that's the ongoing issue for the last twenty years, yes.
Also, did he discuss with you that if that road couldn't be built, that he wanted a car park to be built on three sixty Macquarie Street? The property the council now owned, because it would assist him in developing the substraten above, that he owns above that land?
Yes, he raised the issue of the council resolution about building a car park there.
But it's all linked with the proposed But it's all in linked with the proposed dev- development of his property?
Not specifically, no. Oh, yeah, no, actually, yes, with regards to the master plan, because the master plan relied upon the road going through. And the car park did affect that.
Um. Other than in your evidence, this, um, oral conversation with Mister Ajaka before he, um, attended a meeting with Mister Canavo. Um, have you disclosed to anybody else in council your dealings with Mister Canavo?
Possibly to Lauren Myers.
When she was your executive assistant?
Yes.
Other than Ms. Myers, when she was your executive assistant, anybody else?
Uh. Yes.
Like who?
I think Mister Steve Simitt.
Like when?
I don't remember.
Well, this year?
No, it would have been earlier. As in two thousand and twenty five?
I'm sorry?
You said this year?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Twenty twenty four?
Yeah, it would be around twenty three, twenty four.
Um, in what circumstances did you reveal your dealings with Mister Canavo, um, and his companies?
It was similar situation and discussion with regards to, you know, what the intention of council is, Mister Canavo wanting a meeting with regards to, is council building the car park, are they building the road, what are they doing? And I think that Mister Simitt and Mister Canavo had a, uh, a meeting. I think they have met to discuss the issue. Um, and when it was brought to my attention, I said to them, once again, I've done work for Mister Canavo previously.
Uh, did you record that conversation and what you disclosed to Mister Summit, Simitt, I'm sorry, in writing?
No.
Did you attend a meeting with Mister Canavo in twenty twenty four? Or are you just being informed by others that there are meetings coming up?
No, I didn't attend a meeting with Mister Canavo in twenty four.
Now, the work that you had performed with, um, Mister Canavo, uh, or his companies, you invoiced for that?
Yes.
Um, you didn't invoice for that work until twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Um, you did, you said you performed the work at the end of October twenty twenty one. Um. It took you about six months to issue the invoice?
Approximately.
Um. Uh. The initial invoice, um, if we can bring up please, jca dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one. Yes, can I? Sorry, just before you, oh, good, this, this redactions, excellent. Uh. Excuse me for a moment. Uh, maybe if we don't live stream it at the moment, I think there might be an issue with the second page. Um. If we go to the second page. And you see that's, um, a tax invoice to Joe Canavo of Canavo Investments. Um, introductory services, what were the introductory services?
Um, I introduced a, uh, tenant to his property.
Uh, and um, the invoice there is for thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars?
Yes.
And if you go to the next page. Sorry. Um, it seems to be, um, the invoice is generated by some kind of software system, QuickBooks or something like that?
Yes.
Um, and it's then sent to Mister Canavo?
Yes.
Uh, if we keep on going. Up to page two. Sorry, that. Um, if we.
This isn't livestreamed, is it?
No, that's why we.
Yeah, no, just making sure.
Stopped it. If you keep on going up to, sorry, the beginning of the document, sorry, that was it. Uh. We have you forwarding it to Mister Canavo at Icon Properties on the fourteenth of April.
Yes.
Um, was that the final invoice?
Uh, no, no.
Um, you issued another invoice?
Yes.
For a smaller amount of money?
Yes.
Why did you do that?
There was a, a discrepancy on what the amount that was agreed.
Between you and Mister Canaba?
Yes.
Um. And Mister Canaba had to point that out, did he?
Um, the uh, yes, we had different opinions.
Right, um, if you bring up jca dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero 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 two. Um, you just let me. Yes, I think it's okay, I think reduction.
Well, no, take it down from the livestream, there's an account number there. There's an account number which is not redacted.
Ah, sorry.
So we'll just have it in the room, I think.
So that's the, um, new invoice that you issued?
Uh. Yes.
The thirty three thousand dollars?
Yes.
Um, and that was paid by Mister Canaba?
Yes.
Is this a replacement for the one that I saw a moment ago?
Yes.
Um. I- in twenty twenty two, how many catch-ups or meetings did you have with Mister Canaba?
I don't remember.
Um, did you record the fact that you were meeting with him anywhere?
Normal course would be in my diary.
Mm hmm. What about any record of what you discussed with him?
Uh, no.
Um, at that time, you knew that there was, um, an issue between Mister Canavo and the council?
I've known that for the last twenty or, but, the issue is.
Mister Canavo raised at this catch-up some of his issues?
Uh, which catch-up?
The one you spoke, you gave evidence about in twenty twenty two.
Uh, yes.
Um, but you made no record of what was discussed and what you said?
Uh, yes.
Is there a process when a member, I'll call them a constituent, but someone with interests in the LGA wants to meet? You had a, is there a process whereby they have to do it through your executive assistant? Is there a form filled out requesting a meeting, anything like that?
From time to time, uh, there is. Just the, the challenge is that when you're, wherever you go, you're meeting with people and discussing different matters. And that's when, I guess, the challenge arises.
You mean, as mayor, you're out and about and you run into people and people approach you as mayor and raise their concerns with you?
Yes, and.
But what about where, I'm sorry, Ted, you finished?
Also, the, even, I think it was the other day at, at a lunch break here, when I was in Martin Place. I went to the MLC, so I went to the MLC and then I had two people talk to me about council issues.
Thankfully, I seemed to fly under the radar more than you, um. But what about where someone says, hey, I want to come and meet with you? That's, that's different, would you agree?
Yes.
And what happens then? How is that arranged?
So the, when they send a request through the mayor email address, the, that's run by the, my executive assistant. Um, and they will then send a form, the form will then, excuse me, be filled out. And then a meeting will be organized, uh, if need be.
What about if someone just rings you or sends you a text and say, hey, can we, can we meet?
No.
You wouldn't refer that to your EA to have that process completed?
No, it's, this issue came up with regards to a, um, a res- a, a mo- a notice of motion. And I think which ultimately was passed to get a report about, you know, uh, lobbyist and being lobbied as a councillor. And we all had agreed to it, we're saying, that's fine, but you're gonna have to have somebody with us pretty much all day, every day. Because it's when you're out and about in the community, it's hard to say someone, we can't talk about this. Because, you know, I have no one with me taking notes or.
The, the, being out and about might be, uh, uh, different engaging with the constituents. What I'm really focusing on is when someone says, hey, Mister Mayor, I want to come and meet with you. If they send the email through the, your mayoral email address, it'll go through the process with the form. But if someone contacts you directly for a meeting, it wouldn't go through that process, is that, is that right?
Yeah, um. Not every time, so if I, like now, for example, if I get a message on, say, Instagram, I'll say, look, here's the email, organize it through that way. So more and more of the overwhelming majority would go through that process now. Um, but.
What about if it's someone you know who sends you an email or a text and says, hey, can we meet? I've got, I want to talk to you about my concerns or a particular issue?
Well, the challenge is that when they do that, it's usually, let's catch up, it's been a long time. You know, as in, no, no one is actually saying what they want to catch up for. So they make it as if it's a social, like, catch-up. And then when you get there, they're like, oh, this is what they want to talk about. But what I try to do is, yeah, no worries, yeah, let's catch up. However, you know, what do you want to, I try, I try to get it out of them purely because of time constraints, not that I don't want to see someone, but because I don't have the ability to book something in. Um, so I usually get the issue out, what they want to talk about.
Is it social, is it council business?
Yeah.
Is that the, what you're asking them?
Yeah, you get a, you learn how to do whatever, to get it out of them and say, yeah, you know.
Well, and if it's council business, what would you do next?
Um, send me an email is usually the best way, because that's a commitment from them, that it's if they have a ten minutes to send an email, that means it's important to them. And then it can go through the system. And a lot of the times, it doesn't have to be a meeting, it could be just resolved by staff member giving the phone call or just, all right, I'll look into this issue and get back to you about it.
Might be purely operational and you'll refer it to the appropriate department?
Yes.
Is that a, do you do that all the time or some of the time, most of the time?
As in referring it or?
Yeah, well, this process where send me an email and we'll see where we go next, is that your standard practice or?
Subject to what the matter is, you know, if I can solve it right there and then, I, you know, I had that. Someone is me, someone asked me about private certifiers and something with council and the other day and I could, they want to have a meeting with me, I solved it right there and then and got rid of the issue. Uh, but then I did say, get your certifier to send an email. It's just, that's really case by case basis. Last night, we had one about zero lot boundaries and section eighty eight, eighty eight certificates and all that stuff. And then, once again, staff were able to help out, provide a bit of assistance and then once again, send an email. But email in that situation wouldn't work because the issue was very urgent, the neighbors were. So I'm the only person that goes through that process. Councillors don't have any forms to fill out. Because I brought this issue up recently and saying, well, you know, I get a lot of people saying to me, Ned, it's been months and no one's booked in a meeting. And that has, and I asked the staff, why is that? So, and then I asked further, do councils have to fill out a form when they have meetings with constituents or when they have meetings with staff? But councils don't have that process, it's only burden on myself.
Um, this procedure where you is some note of a meeting with constituents, when was that introduced?
In my previous term, my first term as mayor.
Back in two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen?
Yes.
Um, so where's the, the record of any of your meetings with Mister Canaba?
If they, if it went through my executive assistant, then they would have a, they would be trimmed somewhere. Um, some, I, I, I don't know whether, I think this one, like I said originally, if it was a joke saying, let's catch up and we're catching up. Um, there was a, there's, I guess, the, there was a transition phase where there was, like I said, there were people that I had done work for and I've stopped doing work for into now going into, you know, is he catching up, for example, purely about work?
What I'm asking you. Sorry, I draw that, uh, Mister Canaba had you private email address?
Yes.
Um, it's probably likely that he contacted you via your private email address.
I think he called me or text messaged me, maybe.
Um. You've given evidence that at, um, a catch-up in twenty twenty two, you. Is. Where. Alleged. May. And then. In those cir. That this had the. Up in legal. Has, hasn't he?
Yes.
Um, and if in his evidence, he talks about representations or comments that you made to him when having a meeting with him, you have no documentary record to counter that, have you?
Not, no.
Um, that's one of the re- Um, that's one of the reasons why when you're meeting a constituent. And they are dealing with a matter of substance to the council. You should make a record or some kind of note of what was discussed.
Well, it's actually why I insisted that I have, uh, somebody with me, uh, at all council meetings. And, uh, at, at those said meetings. So at that point in time, um, Lauren Myers was my executive assistant. And she could only do so much, which is why back in my original term, when I was mayor, there were other people. I, I had a senior advisor who would sit in the meetings and take those said notes.
But nobody, you, nobody, you didn't and nobody from the council took any notes of any of the discussions you've had with Mister Canavo?
I don't take notes for any meetings.
So if you, we go back to my question, so nobody took notes of any of your meetings or discussions with Mister Canav?
Yes.
Now, um, could we bring up another document, please? LCC dot zero four zero dot zero zero one dot zero two six seven? Yes, please. Uh, this is a memo prepared by Mister Simmott, um. I think it's Mister Simmott, but we just. Yes, uh Mister Simmott about a meeting attended by the acting CEO himself and Mister Mallard with Mister Canavo. You see that on the seventeenth of June, twenty twenty four?
Yes.
And if we just look at the background notes, um, in the first paragraph, we just leave it there. Mister Canavo feels aggrieved and frustrated with dealings with council dating back twenty years. And there's a reference to the purchase of the two properties.
Yes.
Um, and then, um, there's a reference that to, um, evidence I took you before. That Mister Canavo, um, was granted air rights over lot one. Um, and by granting Mister Canavo the air rights, it increased the potential yield of units that could be built on that property in any future development.
Yes.
Um, then if we move to the next stop point. We just move it up a little bit. That's okay, just stop there. Um, Mister Canavo maintained that he never wanted to sell his properties. But feels like he was forced to do so on the pretense that council would build a thorough road connecting Bathurst to Turners Street. Um, then the next stop point, um, there's the reference to the concept approval on the twenty eighth of June, two thousand and nineteen. I can take you to a, a document, but is it your understanding that he applied for that concept approval in two thousand and sixteen?
I, I'll accept that.
Um, and then if we go to the next stop point, further approval, that is, a development application is required, et cetera. And then the last stop point, Mister Canavo intends on submitting a DA in the future. However, one of his key issues is the property shape and the apparent lack of ability to provide sufficient car parking for future relevant, um, residents. So, um, here they are recording that, um. A DA is required and Mister Canavo intends on submitting a DA in the future.
Yes.
Um, if we go to the next page. We've got council resolutions relevant to providing more public car parks. Um. And this is looking at a car park and actually in Macquarie Street. And then right down the bottom of the page. We've got a heading discussions with Mister Canavo and meeting with mayor and CEO January twenty twenty four. So that reports that you did meet with Mister Canavo in January twenty twenty four.
Now, yes.
And then if we go across the page. Um. There is an account of the conversation. Um. Where point one is, um, the building by the council of a three-storey public car park. Um, has that been built?
Uh, no.
Um, then the adjacent owner, Mister Canavo, would in the future build four stories, um. The above construction would be totally separate. And then for the above scenario, which was discussed between Mister Canavo and the mayor, was viewed positively by Mister Canavo and the mayor. A potential win-win, council builds a car park, separate to that, Mister Canavo builds a car park above, which would benefit his development site. Um, however, due to lack of funds, see below, it's not possible to build the car park. Now, at the time of this discussion in January, it was, um. You were hopeful that council would build the car park on Macquarie Street?
Yeah, as per the resolution, yes.
Um, and what this indicates or this record of the conversation is that, um. Mister Canavo, in trying to develop, um, his, um, site. Wants to build a car park above the council car park.
Uh, yes.
So that recording or brief summary of discussions that you had with Mister Canavo in January twenty twenty four. Does that now accord with your recollection?
Yeah, so there, there, uh, I think I said before, in a meeting in twenty three, this is being January twenty four, so.
No, but I'm not asking you that.
Yes.
We've agreed that. I showed you discussions with Canavon meeting with mayor in January twenty twenty four. Do you now recall attending such a meeting?
Not in January twenty four.
Um, the. When do you say, sorry, I withdraw that, the summary set out in one to four. Excluding the last sentence of paragraph four, does that accord with your recollection of what was discussed at a meeting with Mister Canav?
You're saying without, sorry, the last sentence on point four?
Yeah.
Uh. Yes.
It is your recollection this occurred sometime in twenty twenty three?
Yes, and if I could check my diary, I could confirm with you.
Um, do you have any? I take it you have no separate note or record of this particular meeting?
No.
Excuse me for a minute. Uh, could we bring up OLG dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one four nine eight? Yes. Uh, this is a leisure sent by Mister Canav to the acting general manager in July twenty twenty four?
Right.
You see, see that right up the top?
Yeah, you're saying to Mister, to the general manager?
To the acting general manager?
Yes.
Um, and can you see, um. If you go down the page. Keep on going to a paragraph, um, where in January of twenty twenty four, I received a call from Ned Manoon. As I previously mentioned, we had been speaking for many years, trying to get the best outcome for council. Without causing further damage to Canavon Investments Proprietary Limited, do you see that?
Yes.
Do you agree with that? That you have been speaking for many years with Mister Canav, trying to get the best outcome for council?
Uh, yes.
Um, without causing further damage to Canavon Investments Proprietary Limited?
Uh, yes.
Then he, um, refers to a conversation, um, that, uh, he says you had in January twenty twenty four, where he says. Hi Joe, council now have the money to build a car park at three sixty Macquarie Street, we can now move forward on this project. I will introduce you to Steve and you can work out detail with him. And Mister Canav says, Ned, we haven't caught up for a long time, while I will visit you and we can discuss, we, and we can all discuss the detail. You recall that conversation with Mister Canav?
Uh, no.
Um, has Miss Bustani sat in any of your meetings with, um, Mister Canav?
I don't recall.
Um, if we go across the page. Uh, can you see in the paragraph commencing Jason? Um, I made an appointment to visit Ned and Steve Thursday, the February eighth. And we discussed many issues about the car park detail. And with us was Ned's assistant, a lovely lady lawyer, I do not recall her name. You would assume that's a reference to Miss Bustani? Do you see that Mister?
I'm, I'm reading the email.
No, can you just, I've read the first part and I want to ask you, um, a question about the first part I've read. Read out, so the reference, maybe if we just bring it, the, the document down. You. No, the other way, sorry. Ah, sorry. Uh. There's a reference to Ned called for lunch, we were eating at the old council chambers in the boardroom. Mister Ijarca appeared, conversation moved to council building the three levels of the car park. Which Canavon Investments would build four levels on top. Um, Ned suggested that council could build another two hundred units on top. And that would offset council's car park cost. Um. Do you recall that conversation?
So yeah, sorry, which part of the conversation are you referring to?
Do you, my first question is, do you recall having this lunch on about the February the eighth?
Uh, no.
Um. Do you recall this conversation, um, in which? There is this proposal, I think people describe it as a win-win situation. Of council building the car park to a cou- a couple of levels. And then Mister, um, Canav, building on top of that, utilising his airspace.
Building what? Car park or unit? Car park?
Yeah.
Car park, yes.
And that would be part, as he set out in this document, as part of his plan to develop the site. His remain in sight.
Uh, yes.
Because he wrote, it, it, there was a record of him saying, the issues are, it's an unusual shape. And also the problem with car park, provision of car parking, if I want to develop my site.
Yes.
Um. And if we keep on going down this page, sorry, towards the bottom of the page. Yep, I'm going. Keep on going a little bit more. Keep on going a little bit more. You can see there, Mister Canav now refers to another meeting. Um, and he asks why Ned was not present to advise him. Not because I needed Ned to hold my hand, but because Ned Manoon is front and centre on this issue. And is qualified to verify the circumstances of the past and assist in determining the future. And John, and I think that's a reference to Mister Ijarca, says, it's best if Ned was not at the meeting.
Yes.
Um, so what Mister, um, Canav is saying is due to, um. His dealings with you over a period of time, both when you're on council. And when you were working, um. You are qualified to verify the circumstances of the past meetings and representations.
Yes.
But you have no record of any of those meetings. Or representations or things that you might have said to Mister Canav?
Yes.
Do you see how that puts the council in a vulnerable position with any possible litigation?
Uh, 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 sorry, I, my mistake was, my, sorry, my answer was incorrect. There are records by the staff who are in those meetings taking the records. I personally have not taken any records of the diary.
Well, what records?
Well, whenever, I think the memo we had before was an example that if there's a staff member in a meeting, the staff member would take notes.
You're not at that meeting?
No, one.
What I'm talking about, the meetings that you had with Mister Canav?
Hmm.
Um, in particular, the meeting where, um, you say in either twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three. You, um, spoke to him by yourself.
Yes.
No record of that.
Yes.
Um, any other meeting that you had with Mister Canav by yourself, no record of that.
Yes.
Um, no, other than, um, your evidence. That you informed Mister Ijarca that you had done work for, um, Mister, uh, Canav. Um, there are again, no record of what you informed Mister Canav, uh, Mister Ijarca of the extent of the work that you performed for Mister Canav?
Yeah, only what's in his file mode, Mister Ijarca's file mode. Yeah, only what's in his file note, Mr. Ijakar's file note.
Mr. Ijak make a file note?
Well, if I, I disclose it to him and I assume that as a CEO, he would have taken notes of the meeting that he had.
I'm focusing on your role in making records. You didn't make a record of that.
No.
And you've assumed Mr. Ijakar?
Yes.
Um, the your declaration of, um, pecuniary interests, uh, that form that I think you fill out at least once a year, where you set out any income that you've earned?
Yes.
Um, that's governed by the provisions of the model code of conduct.
Right. Yes.
Um, in particular, Schedule One, disclosure of interest and other matters in written returns.
Yes. Right.
Excuse me for a minute. Uh, could we bring up, to begin with, L C C dot zero one zero dot zero zero one dot four 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 one? It'll be live streamed. And if we first go through to page forty six, you can see that Schedule One?
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. Uh. If we then go through to page fifty two, and if we can go to the top of the document, and expand it a little bit, you can see under clause twenty six, a person making a return under clause four point two one of this code must disclose each source of income that the person, um, reason, sorry, in B I'll focus on, each source of income received by the person during the particular period.
Yes.
Um, and if we then progress down to clause twenty seven, twenty seven commences a reference in clause twenty six to each source of information received by a person is a reference to, and I want to draw your attention to, in relation to any other income, a description sufficient to identify the person from whom or the circumstances in which the income was received or reasonably expected to be received. You see that?
Which number is that, sorry? Twenty seven?
Twenty seven C?
Yep. Yes.
So what twenty seven C is saying, that, um, where you are receiving income, you've got to include a description of sufficient to identify the person from whom or the circumstances in which the income was or is reasonably expected to, sorry, I'll, I'll just keep, the circumstances in which the income was received. Do you see that?
Uh, yes, outside of, outside of employment.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, and so what it's, uh, what it's stipulating is that, um, you've got to include a description, either suf- sufficient to identify the person from whom or the circumstances in which the income was or is reasonably expected to be received.
Yes.
Um, did you comply with that provision in respect of your pecuniary interest forms that were issued covering the period when you received the thirty three thousand dollars from Mr. Canavo's company?
Uh, I, yes, because the income was rece- was received on the section twenty seven A.
Did you receive the money personally from Mr. Canavo?
No.
It went to your company?
Yes.
Um. Did you set out in your pecuniary interest form? So you say you didn't have to comply with C, that you had to comply with A.
No, I have to comply with C, but the income that you're referring to is in relation to twenty seven A, twenty seven C talks about things that, so B talks about, A is about employment, B is about trust, and C is anything else.
Right, what I'm asking you is, did you comply with twenty seven C in your pecuniary interest form?
Yes.
How did you comply with it?
Didn't receive any cer- money in any circumstance that relates to C.
Um, do you say you complied with twenty seven A?
Uh, yes.
Um, did you set out, and how did you comply with it?
On the form, my recollection is I disclosed the companies and the position that I hold within them.
In my submission, the form should be given to the witness, it shouldn't be a memory test of what he wrote on a form. I'm coming to that.
Yeah, that's going to shoot any further, I think that's right. Is that a convenient time?
Oh, yes.
For an hour and a half.
Yep.
Counselor will take a break. I'll adjourn until twelve o'clock and I'll see you back here then. We'll adjourn until twelve.
Um, Mr. Manoon, before the break, I'd taken you to the provisions of the model code of conduct, and your evidence is that in completing your form, which I will take you to in a minute, you were relying on clause twenty seven A in relation to income from an occupation person.
Yes.
All right, I'll take you to, if you can just excuse me. Uh, this is the relevant form. Um, L C C dot zero zero six dot zero zero two dot zero zero one zero. I, yes, there's been reductions. Uh, you can see it's Schedule Two, and if we go to, uh, underscore zero 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 three, uh, and just move down the page, yep, stop there. You can see it's for the period one July twenty twenty one to thirty June twenty twenty two, and it was submitted on the third of October twenty twenty two.
Yes.
Right with that. Um, now the work that you were doing, um, you've given evidence that you were providing, I think it was introductory and also advice work to Mr. Canavo and his companies. That was how it was described in your in.
Yes.
Right. Um. If we then go to down the bottom of this page, what sort, section B, sources of income?
Yes.
And then if we go across the page, you record, well, forget the first company, but you then say, um, Director H K T Project Management Group.
Yes.
See that? You don't expand in this document um, about what work H K T Project Management Group undertook?
No.
Uh, you don't give any details about, um, for example, I received income from providing advice um, to a property holder within the municipality, um, dealing with a property?
Under point five, you're referring to?
Or anywhere in the document, if you want to have a look at the document, we can quickly go through it. Um. It's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
You can see nil nil, ifs nil. Think it then moves to travel. Um. Section E, um, well, section E, interests and positions in corporations. Um, you only list, um, you list the two directorates, but you don't list the, um, description of the principal objects of the corporation. You just record that you were a director.
And project management.
And project management. Um, but no further, um, details about the work that you were undertaking as a director of Pro- H K T Project Management Group, and in particular, any income earned by the company in dealing with property owners within the municipality.
And, and, so can you repeat the question?
Sorry, I said the whole document, if we keep on going, you can see there's property developer section, and you answer that no. Then across the page, um, position in trade unions and professional or business associate, sorry, associations, and then we've got debts, uh, and then dispositions of property, and you're all nil nil. Then across the pl- page, discretionary disclosures, nothing. And then there's a section about protection of privacy. Okay?
Yes.
So that's the document you filled out.
Yes.
Um, nowhere in the document do you reveal that your work that you earned income from concerned advice to a property owner who owned property within the Liverpool, um, local government area?
Uh, yes, because I answered the questions in the document.
If you listen to my question, nowhere in the document do you say, um, income that, um, I'm declaring as part of my occupation included advice provided to a property owner who owned property within the Liverpool local government area?
Uh, yes, because I'm, it doesn't ask that.
No, I'm not asking you that, nowhere did you state that, did you?
Right, yeah, I said, yes, because it doesn't ask that.
I'm not interested in that, just interested, what I'm exploring is the sufficiency of this particular document.
I, I object to this interchange, because the witness is answering questions. In fairness, my line of friend should put to the witness question. She says call for particular information.
I'm trying to est- establish first that the witness agrees it wasn't revealed. I then have some subsequent questions.
I think he agrees it's not. He has a particular expla- explanation, and we'll go from there.
And if you, if we go to page seven, under discretionary disclosures, you didn't disclose anything there along the lines of, and part of the income that I earned as part of my occupation was providing advice to a property owner who owned property within the local government area?
Yes.
We, where do you say that, under? Section I discretionary disclosure?
No, I didn't.
Is it the way that you have completed this form? If you were earning income via a directorship of a company, and that company was providing advice or other work to a property developer within the Liverpool local government area, you didn't have to disclose those circumstances or details?
Object to the use of property developer, in what term, what, in what sense is it being used? That can be a term of art in other statutes.
Yeah, I think, I think caution and clarity is needed.
Sorry?
I think that's right, I'll reject the question in that form.
Um. If you are having dealings with a person who has lodged a property, uh, uh, sorry, a development application, so I want you to assume the following. Um, in October twenty twenty one, you are providing advice to, um, a person who has lodged a development application in respect of property in Liverpool City Council area. Right, make that assumption.
And wh- when was the application lodged, are you, you're saying October, or given the advice in October?
Um, it was lodged in September twenty twenty one, so it's lodged, and you're providing advice to that person on their prop- on their development application. Right, that's what I want you to assume.
Hmm.
You're capable, you can do that?
Are you referring to Mr. Canavo, or just in a general?
So, Mr. Manoon, I asked you to assume the following.
Yep.
So we're talking about October twenty twenty one, before you were re-elected.
Hmm.
A development application has been lodged in September.
Yes.
You're providing advice to, um, that property owner in October twenty twenty one.
Yes.
You received payment for that advice in April twenty twenty two.
Yes.
Yes. Um, is it your view that in completing this form, you did not have to disclose any of the circumstances of doing that work for the person who had lodged a development application and receiving money for that, um, work in April twenty twenty two?
I, I object to this, I think this should be done in the absence.
Yes, counsel, would you mind just stepping outside? Thank you.
Um, the difficulty is that the premise of the question was a series of assumptions, and then the question reverts then to the first person, you did this, you did that, it's not put as an assumption, if those circumstances, what should you or do you accept, so the, the question misfired in that respect in my. The other difficulty is, the premise of the assumption is that the work that Mr. Manoon, well, it's a lining between an assumption and the real world, but there's an assumption in there, that the assumption is that the work for which payment was received was about in relation to a DA. Was about in relation to a D A. Um I don't think that's clear on the the evidence at all as to that, whether that was what the work was for.
That might highlight your first point, the the distinction between a series of assumptions and then. Something that might have happened factually and the mixing of those two concepts. I think there's some force in that the series of assumptions mirroring the series of facts and.
I thought I made it clear that they were assumptions.
You're not suggesting that you didn't, but. Um. I think. I sensed in the witness's hesitation. Some. Uncertainty about whether he was being asked about how he approached this particular form as opposed to. His view about how a form should be approached in those particular circumstances. So then. There might be a difference.
We'll try and make it more simple and clear.
Yeah, I'm gonna have the council. Thank you, counsel.
Simon, what I'm doing is I'm giving you a series of assumptions, right? Do you understand what an assumption is?
Yes.
And what I'm exploring um is this particular form and what it comes, right?
Yes.
And so I'm making, I'm asking you to make assumptions. What that means is I'm not saying these were the circumstances that existed at the time. I'm asking you to assume some facts and then I want to ask you a question. If you assume those facts. How would have you filled out this form? Okay?
Yes.
You understand that?
Yes.
Right. Assumption number one. When you're not a councillor. You provide advice to a landowner within Liverpool City Council area. Who has lodged. A development app.
Am I aware of that development application in your assumptions?
Well, I think if you're providing advice to them about a development application, you would know about.
So in the.
No, Mr. Manon, I'll start again.
Yep.
And I'm talking about a property owner with property within Liverpool City Council, right?
Hmm.
That property owner has lodged a development application. Right?
When?
That property owner has lodged a um development application. Fact number one, right? Fact number two, it was lodged in September. Two thousand and twenty one, before you're a councillor.
Yes.
You provide advice to that property owner about their development application in October. Before you're a councillor.
Um. You if they've lodged in September, how do I provide advice after the fact?
Perhaps if we just go back a step, I think what what you're being asked to assume is this. Before you're a councillor.
Yes.
You provide advice to someone with property in the L G A. About a development application. Which that person, constituent, has lodged.
Yes.
Um you're then elected to council in December.
Yes.
In April of the next year, you issue an invoice to that property owner. About the advice you provided back in October.
Yes.
And you receive payment of that invoice.
Yes.
And you say that's part of your occupation.
Yes.
In completing this form, assuming those facts, would you set out anywhere? That yes, I received income and the income was derived or earned. By providing advice about a development application. Would you provide any more detail than the. In this book?
So I think looking at the the sections. The um referring to prior to seventeen, so say one to sixteen. There is no question of that nature. Question seventeen, however, in using the word discretionary is very wide open to.
So is your.
Close anything, I guess you wanted to.
So your answer is that there would be a um a possibility that you could include further information or circumstances. In section circumstances in which you derive that income in section seventeen.
Yes, under discretion discretionary.
Are you, do you recall that you provided any um guidance as to what's included under a discretionary disclosure?
I think that the word discretionary covers it.
It speaks for itself.
Speaks for itself.
Okay, so you can't recall whether in any um material provided by, for example, Office of Local Government. Setting out what could or should be included in that section.
Uh nothing specifically. Is there anything in that schedule to the code that you took the witness to earlier? You can come back to it after lunch.
Quite long.
Yes.
I think if you go through to page.
Yes, yes.
If you, oh, sorry, we've got to jump back to L C C dot zero one zero dot zero zero one dot four 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 one. And it's at page fifty three. That does provide some guidance. A person may voluntarily disclose in return any interest, benefit, advantage or liability. Whether pecuniary or not, that is not required to be disclosed under this provision of this schedule.
Okay. Whatever that.
Which doesn't. Probably on a scale of helpfulness is probably about a one.
Oh, I I read it as, you know, is the interest? Interest being defined as. Yep, something you benefit from, which then leads to the next word benefit or advantage.
Yeah, I think it's a catchall. If there's anything that doesn't fit neatly within the preceding clauses, then. That's where you may voluntarily disclose it.
They seem all future facing.
I'm sorry, say again?
I think they all seem all future facing. Versus historical.
Why do you say that?
Because eh you're if you're saying you have an in in interest in some things that. Would assume that you're would get something out of it at a future. Uh date or you currently have an interest. So you. Yeah, let's say it was a property, then you have an interest in that property and it's potential to go somewhere. A benefit is, you know, some, I think I see it as, once again, something that you do in the future that you you're disclosing it because. Uh you would get a benefit out of it or an advantage, or therefore, once again, the term liability. But it's not as in, oh, you did this before versus is it going to impede on your decision making going forward?
Um excuse me. Uh. That can be taken down. Um I want to ask you some questions about the sale of. Um I think it's lot one O one and one O two. Um. I think it's described as um Hamerville Park to Moorbank Sports Club.
Yes.
Um. It was subject um to a probity report by O'Connor Marsden.
Yes.
Um and in that report, O'Connor Marsden were critical about some of the procedure leading to the sale.
Yes, my recollection.
Just to try and shortcut this, I'm going to take you to the executive summary. Of the O C M pro- probity report. If you could bring up please L C C dot zero zero four dot zero zero three dot eight three nine four. Yeah. So this was part of the Audit Risk and Improvement Committee meeting. Um and if you can first go through to page seventy six. You can see that's the beginning of the O C M report.
Yes.
Now, could we go then to page? Seventy nine. Uh it's got project background. Um and you can see that it goes back to two thousand and twelve. Where sporties have expressed a desire to purchase part of the adjoining council-owned land. See that?
Uh yes.
Um I want to then take you down to. Um. Six of June twenty twenty three, if you keep on going down that page. Um. Now, there's a reference in um June twenty twenty three that the council began. Community and stakeholder consultation on an integrated aquatic centre. Then on the sixth of June, um sporties made an offer. You see that?
Yes.
Um. Then on the twenty fifth of um August, there is um another offer from sporties, but for lots one O one and one O two.
Yes.
Um. Then if we go across the page to um. Zero zero eight zero. Um there's a reference to the twenty fifth of October council meeting. Um where there's um. A resolution to authorize the C E O to explore the disposal of operational land at Hamerville. Subject to an offer from Moorbank Sports Club and to provide a further report.
Yes.
Then next dot point, you've got public exhibition of the Hamerville draft plan of management.
Yes.
Um commenced on the twenty fourth of November with community feedback open until the sixteenth of January.
Yes.
Um then if we keep on going. You've got thirteenth of December, council resolved to sell the proposed lot.
Uh yes.
Then you've got council meeting of the seventh of February, council rescinded the resolution. Um and instead resolved to defer the sale of the proposed lot until extensive community consultation had been completed.
Yes.
Um and then we've got, if we keep on going. February to May twenty twenty four, specific community consultations as outlined um were can. In the December twenty three confidential report were conducted. Um and then finally. Um. A report has been drafted for consideration at the council meeting on the twenty sixth of June. Um which provides an overview of the outcome of the community consultation.
Yes.
Um. And if we go across then to page eighty one. This is a summary of the O C M report. You can see that um O C M um. Comments that council has documented the more recent discussions and negotiations with sporties. Um. However, further documentation could be included in the council report for the twenty sixth of June, including. Confirmation that the individuals involved in the process do not have interests of associations which could. Give rise to a conflict. Justification for the decision to proceed with a non um compet- competed direct negotiation sale. Um for the two lots consistent with the I C A T guide guidance material. Um and detailed evaluation of the proposal against identified criteria. And then there is the next stop point, there is a lack of documentation in relation to the initial discussions. And negotiations with sporties which resulted in the submission of offers for the purchase of the lots. In two thousand and nineteen and subsequently on the sixth of June. Um the correspondence relating to these offers refers to meetings with council. However, there does not appear to have been records of these meetings, other than meetings being included in the C E O's diary. So you see all that?
Is that the one where it says, sorry? From twenty nineteen? Yeah. Twenty nineteen. Yes.
Um so. What the O C M probity report um is emphasizing in its. Uh criticisms or comments in section one point three is the necessity for transparency.
Yes.
Um so transparency in that um communications discussions concerning. Concerning sporties offers or interest in the land should have been recorded.
Uh yes.
Should have been documented.
Yes.
Um individuals involved in the process, there should have been a positive declaration. That they don't have any interests um of associations which could give rise to a conflict.
Uh yes.
Um and also set out in that brief chronology I took you to. It was obvious that council in your meetings were concerned about consultation with the public.
Yeah, yes, some councillors were, yes.
Well, it led to the February um sorry. The February twenty four meeting where council decided to rescind. The resolution to sell the two lots.
Yes.
Subject to um further consultation or extensive consultation has been completed.
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. Now I want to show you an extract from the meeting of the thirteenth of December twenty twenty three. Um. We have a video of that. Um L C, it might be on a. Do you have it on a U S B or? I'm sorry. Uh. I was unsure whether you can ju- whether relying on the, the uploaded system or whether it was put on a separate USB, but you haven't got a separate USB. Okay, I think that's easier to use. Um, it should be L C C dot zero two four dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one.
Next item is conf zero seven, Hammondville Precinct, and I would like to move a motion, page one, one, two, three.
Stop. Now, can I just pause there? You've heard your voice.
Yes.
Um, and you're talking about next item is confidential document, uh, sorry, confidential report zero seven, Hammondville Precinct.
Yes.
And this is the meeting of the thirteenth of December twenty twenty three.
Commissioner, I understand this is part of the recording session.
Right?
I wonder if it might play just in.
Well, the audio will still be streamed. We can not stream the video, but the audio, that won't deal with the audio. Even is, what's the nature of the confidentiality?
Uh, I.
It persists.
I understand that.
I'm sorry, can you just speak up a little?
I apologize, Commissioner, I understand that the confidentiality and moving, moving at the time into the closed session would have been under the Local Government Act in accordance with the usual, usual requirements of the council meetings.
Yes.
I don't have, uh, precise instructions as a basis on which this particular part of the reporting was held in both in private session.
Well, I presume it was because it was dealing with a potential commercial transaction at the time.
I believe that is.
If you're asking.
Which has been completed.
Has been completed, but are you, are you asking me to deal with this in private and if so, why?
Uh, now have a moment just to take.
Of course you can, yeah, of course you can. Just, just, just pause for a moment, counsel.
Commissioner, I think that we're content at this point.
Thank you. Intimate.
I'm grateful, I'm grateful for that time, not a problem.
Now, um, you heard the beginning of the reporting?
Yes.
Are you dealing with confidential reports in Hammondville Precinct? And part of, um, the report was a resolution that the council agree to sell proposed lots one oh one and one oh two to Moorbank Sports Club.
Yes.
Um, and I didn't want to show this in detail, but, um, you move the motion, it's seconded by Deputy Mayor McNair.
Uh, yes.
Um, and then, uh, there is the usual speakers for and against.
Uh, yes.
And councillor Green spoke against.
I don't specifically remember the debate.
Um, councillor Hall spoke again.
Don't remember the debate, I'll assume so.
And, um, councillor Caliander spoke against.
No, I'll, I'll assume so, yes.
Um, can we bring, go through to thirteen point three nine, please?
I just want to point out, we weren't wearing ties because the A C had broken down that day, so. I'm glad he was wondering.
I had made that assumption, it looks warm, to the extent one, it's saying warmth through a screen.
And it's in the old chambers, isn't it?
Yes.
Councillor Hall is stoic.
Yep, yeah, indeed.
Yeah.
Uh, from thirteen, uh, point three nine, yeah.
Councillor Caliander?
Thank you, Mayor, look.
Are you speaking for or against?
Against. Um, I also have, uh, concerns around a proposal to sell council land, as councillor Hall pointed out. There have been times where, um, you know, the, the decision was only realized, it was only realized that the decision to sell land was the wrong one, you know, down the track. I think what adds to the risk is, given the price of land at the moment, if we were to decide in, you know, a few years' time that it was the wrong decision and that we wanted to buy it back like we did with, um, Hoxton Park Road, we would not be assured of, uh, the, the cost of that. Um, because we all know that the cost of land is rising exponentially. Um, and, you know, in terms of the, the community consultation on this, the community should know, this is their land. We are representatives of the community and we should be open and transparent in saying to people, well, hey, here is, um, an upgrade, a potential upgrade of facilities, but in.
Sorry, councillor, I have to pull you up on a point of order there in saying that we, we should be transparent, you're saying that council has not been transparent on this?
Well, considering we're currently in confidential session, I.
No, we're not in confidential, this is meaning.
Considering part of this motion says keeps confidential this report.
Yeah, that's typical practice in doing that, but you're saying, but, sorry, you're implying that councillors and council staff have not been transparent. So I pulled you up on a point of order on that, you'd have to choose to withdraw that statement. Um, I, I would ask that you would because it's implying that council is not acting appropriately and you're putting council into disrepute.
Well, given that the first time anyone on this council heard about this proposal was when you stood up in front of a press conference, I would say that there has been a certain amount.
Council, I, I go back to it, it's a point of order. This has been a negotiation for how many, has anybody here met with Moorbank Sports Club? Right, in the previous year, in the previous term of council? Was anybody aware of this before in the previous term of council? Um, anyone, you were, anyone else, or did no one else turn up?
Not, not in, not in this particular fashion, this wasn't the proposal that way.
So you've not have been, no one, you've not been aware, but there's been no discussions with Moorbank Sports Club for selling land, sorry, I'll do a spot on a second, for selling land?
Given you cut into.
No, 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 it's, yes, councillor, because, um, I'm the chair of this meeting, right? And as I've called a point of order because you're bringing council into disrepute. You are saying council is not being transparent with the way it deals with the community, all right?
And that is my opinion and perspective.
Great, great, so, so you're bringing everybody into disrepute and I remind you of the provisions associated with that. Um, this, and to correct you as a point of clarification, this has been going on for over ten years, right? So if you haven't read about this in your emails that you've been getting, if you haven't been aware of this in the briefings, you've been on council for seven years and three months. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
At no point in any of those ten years was the proposal for council to outlay multiple million dollars of, uh, of council funds into this particular proposal, right? So.
So there hasn't, sorry, can I just get some clarification on that? What, how long has this been, project been going on for? With regards to putting funds into building a facility?
Well, can I ask you, was there a resolution of council on the books to, uh, to fund this particular project before you stood up at that press conference?
Um, yeah, there's been, there's been, there has been, let's go, there's been a master plan, I'll refer to it.
Yeah, through the sale of land, when this came back, when this came to council in twenty twenty, um, with the proposal of disposal, uh, the resolution at the time was to then undergo the further work, which was the master plan, which is why council has invested so in, um, in, in that process and have got this far in terms of, of that provision. So we've worked to work through the master plan, the engagement with the community to get it right, and now we've come back with that, um, proposal.
And sorry, what year was that?
Uh, I believe, uh, it's twenty twenty, but I would have to get.
So by the previous, so by, so by, so by the previous council.
I need to pull that up for a second.
Pardon?
I need to pull that up for a second, as councillor Hagerty pointed out, nobody's contesting that, that, that there was discussion around this type of project in some way, shape or form for, um, for a long period of time. However, a master plan does not constitute a resolution of council saying that we, um, we put X number of funds towards.
So why, so, so let's see this, so the staff work on a master plan? So master plans work like this. The staff ask for money in the budget.
Wonderful.
Sorry, one second, councillor, no, 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 no.
It's a condescending tone, actually.
No, there is no condescending tone.
No, no, no.
Councillor, you are accusing this councillor, you are excusing this, you are excusing this councillor, this council, right? Of acting in a fashion that is not in line with the Local Government Act.
An issue with one word is what I've said. You've taken issue with one word.
If I asked you to please turn off your microphone, you have said that this council is not working in the appropriate fashion in line with the Local Government Act, right?
I have not said that.
Councillor, please, I.
I said in the interest of transparency.
Practice, when the chair rises, he's not, the, the chair is not to be interrupted by councillor, right? I ask you to please, I ask you to please respect the code of meeting practice as resolved by this council, right? You are saying, councillor, I had to interrupt you because you brought this council, you are saying you're bringing into disrepute by your comments.
And I just.
I have an obligation as a chair of this meeting to ensure that no, no derogatory comments are made against.
She's not allowed to make any comments, you keep bullying and, and talking over her.
No, all due respect, as per the code of meeting practice.
You can get up and talk over people and not let them have their say.
When the chair.
I don't remember that bit of the code of meeting practices.
So when the chair, you don't really, we'll have a look at it, feel free to it.
Yeah, where you, where you can get up and speak over people and not let them have.
No, councillor, it's about keeping.
Because you don't like what they're saying, no, you don't like what they're saying.
It's within the, it's within the code of meeting practice, if you disagree with it, feel free to amend it, but it's, it's a code of meeting practice.
It's not.
If somebody is bringing this organisation into disrepute, it is my duty as the chair to make sure that order is kept within the meeting, okay?
And this, this determination around disrepute is one that you have determined based on one word.
Huh?
You, in this, uh, this understanding of bringing council into disrepute is what you have ruled based, based on one word, and I actually don't think that's accurate.
All right, okay, thank you, all right, but you made your point, if you want to, you can sit there and move, uh, whatever you want to do appropriately as per the code.
I, I was speaking against the motion.
Okay, great, thank you councillor, so I need to get back to this point.
So at this point, you're just going to talk over me, not allow me to have my say.
Councillor, I have the chair, I'm the chair of the meeting and I have the call of the chair, okay?
I've never contested that.
Okay, but you're constantly interrupting me, right?
Because you interrupted.
I call the, because I call the point of order councillor, right?
Based on one word.
Yeah, and it's, and you haven't withdrawn that word.
No, I haven't.
Okay, great, well, you're bringing councillor, you, you are bringing councillor into disrepute. There are conflict, there are issues with that.
That is.
You are saying the staff are not working in a transparent fashion, and I'm saying to you that a budget was exhibited, right?
And you.
And in that budget, that whole part, councillor, the budget was exhibited, which so councillors would have resolved in asking money for a master plan which went on exhibition. To get, the budget went on exhibition, the staff then conducted a master plan, the master plan was then reported back to council, sorry, it was reported back to council, councillors in twenty twenty voted for that master plan. And you're saying, oh, there's been no expenditure of funds or there's no commitment. Why do a master plan and consult with the community if you have no intention of actually doing any work within that master plan?
Mayor, do you understand the difference between a master plan and a formal resolution of council?
Yes, no, sorry, yes, and I can tell you what that is, so the master plan had a formal resolution to adopt it, right?
No funds that were specifically allocated for that, and that is what I'm contesting.
For, so no funds, yes, and at this point in time, no funds have been allocated to go out there and actually build something, right? But what we're saying is, we are now taking action to build, to build something and it's being done in a very transparent way, as councillor Rhodes mentioned, this has been consulted numerous times, numerous master plans, it's been on the budget.
Community asking about, you know, this, this, the, um, uh, the disposal of, of council land and other types of assets in order to balance this out, that suggests to me that there has not been appropriate community consultation or understanding of all of these elements of the project, which was my point in the first place, if you had not interrupted me.
No, but you are saying if you don't understand by bringing this, if you want.
Well, we've just gone on.
I've made it clear councillor, I called a point of order.
That I was at.
I call it no different than if somebody calls a point of order on someone else. What I'm saying to you is that, that comment is not appropriate because the staff have been extremely transparent, right, about how this has been consulted, simple as that. They've been transparent and I, I have to stick up for the staff on this one. You know, if you want to have a go at them, then I guess you understand I have made my point.
And I think in the explanation of all of this, I have not put staff at the centre of where there has been issues in terms of the process around.
But you're saying someone is, you're saying people are being transparent, who's not being transparent?
There is, I'm sure you can work that out.
No, I cannot. No, I cannot, you're saying, so now you're implying, once again, so who's, so if the staff aren't being transparent, now you're saying councils aren't being transparent?
Well, in this whole process of.
And your best thing is if you just withdraw it, we can move on, right? Huh?
I will not withdraw it.
Okay, that's fine, well, then it gets dealt with accordingly.
Fine.
Can we move on, please?
Yeah, so please, continue.
Considering you've just railroaded everything that I, that contributed, I wanted, a contribution I wanted to make.
It's not called rail, it's called a point of order.
Same difference.
Okay, so no points of orders.
No, 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 hold on, same impact.
Hmm.
I, I rephrase that, same impact.
Yep.
And I find, I, I actually find this whole exchange extremely troubling in terms, if we're going to talk about the code of meeting practice, the role of, of the mayor is to chair the meeting. At, at this point, what we have just been doing is, is arguing from, what you've just been doing is arguing from the chair.
Um, yeah, because.
Which is not within the bounds of the, the role of the.
Because I called a point of order councillor, and you're with, you're refusing to withdraw it and you kept interrupting me and making the point of order. And when the chair rose as per the kind of meeting practice, you continued to interrupt me as a councillor Hagerty.
Well, as the chair, where does that leave us now?
Well, you can continue to make your point, but I just mind you that your comments be in line with the code of meeting practice.
Well, considering that was entirely, you know, that was entirely railroaded, I will leave it at, I, I am not in favour of, of this motion.
Thank you, are there any other, um, any other points, councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, just a point, um, in, in the report, uh, it does say that the tendering guidelines recommend that consideration be given to tendering the sale of land in controversial, contentious or political circumstances, but those are considered not to apply here. I think given what we just saw in the last fifteen minutes, we might want to reconsider that.
We can stop it now. Um, Mr Manoon, um, a motion was being debated in closed session by the council?
I think it was indicated that was an open session. You referred to my comments that I, while I was chairing.
Um. No, it was.
I think there was some uncertainty in the exchange between the councillors, I think councillor Caliander thought it was enclosed and I think councillor Manoon thought it was not yet.
Um. We saw the recording of this and we were provided with a recording of a confidential session of an ordinary council meeting. Um, given that it was dealing with, um, a confidential report, dealing with a proposed of confidential report, dealing with a proposed. of confidential report dealing with a proposed, um, sale of property, it would have been dealt with in a closed session.
And no, because when we, we receive confidential items at every council meeting and we own, we are on the side of caution to go into closed session. Subject, we, we try to have it in open as much as possible. It's only when we need to go into detail that under section ten A, I think it is, we wouldn't go. So if we're talking numbers or specific questions, then we would resolve to go into closed session. But items that are provided under confidential cover are usually resolved and to an extent debated in open session cautiously.
Maybe the minutes will help us because I had apprehended from when Mr Andrews rose to his feet that this was in confidential session. Um, so the minutes might give us a hint.
Look, I know at the time maybe we could look at that over lunchtime.
Yes.
All right, um, councillor, we'll break for lunch, I'll resume at two P M. Uh, and I'll adjourn until then. Thank you. Thank you councillor.
Yes, Miss McTominay.
Can we bring up a transcript of that recording? L C C dot zero two four dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one? Oh. Oh, hold on. Ah, sorry. I'll give you another number. Um, I N Q dot zero nine, one dot zero zero one dot zero 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 five? Yes, thank you. Um, Mr Manoon, I, this is a transcript of uh, the segment which dealt with, um, confidential report number seven and contains um, a transcript of the excerpt that I showed you just before lunch.
Yes.
Uh, the first thing I just wanted to raise with you is a correction. Can we go through to page eight of the document? Can you see it? This is, um, you're having an interchange, um, with councillor Caliander and then at line twenty councillor Hagerty speaks and it says she's not allowed to make any comments. Um, it's then recorded she keep bullying and talking over. When I was listening to it, I didn't hear you, oh, has it been corrected? Oh, it has been corrected already, sorry, good, get that. Um. Excuse me. Mr Manoon, throughout the, um, section that I played to you, you keep on saying that you're taking a point of order.
Yes.
Under the code of meeting practice, can the mayor or the chair of the meeting take a point of order?
Uh, yes.
Um. If we can bring up I N Q dot zero one two dot zero zero one dot zero zero two zero? You were the chairperson of the meeting?
Yes.
Uh, this was the mo, model code of meeting practice at the relevant time. If we go through to page fifty-three. Yes. There's a section that deals with points of order. See that?
Yes.
Fifteen point one, a councillor may draw the attention of the chairperson to alleged reach of this code by raising a point of order. So it's not stating that the chair can raise a point of order. It's a councillor raising a point of order.
Your, your question was can the chair take a point of order?
Yes.
Yes, and take as in, that's when a councillor raises a point of order?
Yeah.
The chair takes it, accepts it.
Well, no.
I think, I think you're trying to refer whether.
Making points of order in that, um, meeting, weren't you?
Yeah, I, I think there's a difference of.
No, 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 were you taking points of order in that meeting?
I take points of order in every meeting, yes.
Um. You continually say things like, I have to put you up on a point of order here. I pulled you up on a point of order. You're, I have called a point of order.
Yes.
So you are calling or taking the point of order?
There's a difference between taking and calling.
Um.
What's the difference in your mind?
As in, if taking is when a councillor raises a point of order, then I have to take that and then deal with it versus myself raising a councillor as to a point of order or calling them to order.
Or what, sorry?
Or calling them to order.
Well, that's the difference, isn't it? You as chair don't call or take a point of order, do you?
No, I do, my job is to, yes, I can call a councillor to order.
Yes, but that's not calling or taking a point of order, is it? It's under a different section allowing, um, other considerations. Do you agree with that?
Um, yeah, which, which section?
Um, well, if you look at points of order fifteen point one, it does not provide for the chairperson to take a point of order, does it? I'm looking at clause fifteen.
Yep, and this, this document is not Liverpool Council's code of meeting practice.
Right, but this was the one that, this is the model that was adopted by Liverpool City Council.
The model forms as a foundation, but the actual Liverpool one is, would be different because I don't refer to this during the meetings. Now, there obviously is, this is the foundation of it, of the document, but council does, it is set out differently.
So you say, under the, um, code of meeting practice adopted by Liverpool City Council, you can ta, you as chair can take or call a point of order?
Uh, what I'm saying is that if we're going to be referring to the code of meeting practice, then we should refer to the one that I actually use.
Well, I'll take you to the one that I want to take you to. Are you saying, under the Liverpool City Council code of meeting practice in operation at this time, you as chair were allowed to take or call a point of order?
Uh, yes.
Right, under the equivalent of clause fifteen?
I, once, I need to see the document.
Uh, if we bring up I N Q dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one one three eight? Three six, sorry? And maybe if we can have six three? Yeah. And if you can just on both concentrate on clause fifteen, um, point one to fifteen point three? On the right hand side, if you go to page fifty-three and we're after clauses fifteen point one to fifteen point three? And then on that side, it's page thirty? And again, if we can blow up fifteen point one to fifteen point three? Fifteen point one, fifteen point two, fifteen point three are identical.
Uh huh.
Right?
Yep.
And what I'm saying is a point of order under the model code and the code adopted by Liverpool City Council, a point of order can only be taken by a councillor, not the chair.
Agree with that, under section fifteen point four.
Can you let me ask the questions? Under fifteen point one to fifteen point three, which is dealing with points of order, the chair cannot take a point of order, can the chair? You agree with that?
So what specifically was your question?
Say it again. Looking at the heading points of order under clauses fifteen point one, fifteen point two and fifteen point three, they do not provide for the chair of the meeting to take a point of order.
Yes.
Now, under the next section underneath, and keep them both side by side, questions of order, that allows you to call any councillor to order?
Yes.
Um, and then, um, the question of order, um, is that linked with clause fifteen point eleven, which refers to acts of disorder?
I don't have fifteen eleven in front of me.
Uh, well, if you accept they're identical, it's over on the right hand side. So when you're allowed, under fifteen point four, to call any councillor to order, is that restricted to the circumstances of fifteen point eleven?
Stricted, I think that would be the, that would be the main elements of it.
Where you would call a councillor to order?
Yes, I, if I have the document, I can refresh it in my mind and I can reread it. But I think there are other, there are other opportunities, but I'd have to refresh and read the document again.
Um, to be fair, if we, if you, oh no, on, on the left hand side you've got D N E, so it all appears there. Um, because at the meeting that we played the recording before lunch, um, no other councillor raised a point of order about councillor Caliander's, um, comment, did they?
No.
Um, her comment, and maybe if we can bring back the transcript? And go to page five? And if we go down to about line twenty-four? Councillor Caliander is speaking against the motion. Um, she is at first raising, she's raising um, issues dealing with selling of, um, council assets. Um, and then she says, in terms of community consultation, the community should know. This is their land, we are representative to the community and we should be open and transparent in saying to the people where, hey, here is a potential upgrade of facilities, but in order to, and you cut her off.
Yes.
You don't allow her to continue expressing, um, the particular argument or submission that she is developing there.
Yes.
Um, and you, instead of, um, raising, um, calling her to order, you then engage in, um, a debate and argument with her?
No, I called her to order.
No.
And then.
You say, I have to put you up on a point of order. In saying that we should be transparent, you're saying the council has not been transparent on this. And then it continues with an argument between you and councillor Caliander, doesn't it?
Uh, uh, yes, well, I wouldn't call, I'm trying to, once again, bring her to order and.
Don't you, as, um, an efficient, um, chair, don't you call her to order and identify what the issue is? And then she can respond?
Which is what I do in line thirty-four.
Well, um, no, you don't. You're saying to you, in saying, you ask her a question. In saying that we should be transparent, you're saying that the council has not been transparent on this.
Yeah.
Um, and then it deteriorates into a just, a debate and argument between you and councillor Caliander. And what I'm suggesting to you as a chair, that's not appropriate conduct.
The.
Do you agree with that or not?
The options available to me was to bring the council to order, which I did. I then raised the issue of why she is not, she's not in order by the implication. She then says, well, we're in confidential to support her argument, which I then say, no, we're not. So she clearly didn't have an understanding of the situation wherein. She then continues to state, her and councillor Hagerty, that they don't know the code of meeting practice and continue to do so.
No, that's not the case, Mr Manoon. Um, what she. You continue to put to her that she's implying that councillors and council staff have not been transparent. And then you make the comment, it's implying that the council is not acting appropriately. And you're putting the council into disrepute. Now, what she was doing, she was raising a genuine concern. That you're looking at selling, um, council asset, land which belongs to the community. You're then foreshadowing that those proceeds are going to be used to build a pool. And she's making a valid point. That you should be open and transparent in saying to the people. Yep, potential upgrading facilities, potential pool. But you're going to lose, you're going to lose land which is owned by the community. And that's a valid point.
Uh, yes, and there's been no other project that we have done as much consultation then than on this particular item.
That was a valid point. That she was attempting to make, wasn't it?
I, I disagree because he's implying that we're not being transparent. Transparency means you do community consultation. Council had conducted numerous rounds of community consultation on that.
Well, the council ultimately didn't agree with you on that because in February. They voted to rescind the motion and undertook more detailed consultation, didn't they?
Well, and I think I voted for that as well.
I'm not asking you that, Mr. Manon. What I'm saying to you is that her point about transparency and, um. Consultation was a valid point, and indeed that was confirmed by the fact. That there were a couple more additional months of consultation after this resolution.
Yeah, so if she communicated it differently, which is all I was asking for. There's no issue with her substance, but if she said, I would like this to be further consulted with the community in more detail, that's fine. And ultimately, that's what we agreed upon. We did not agree upon, and the point of order was the implications that council is not acting in a transparent fashion.
But you didn't even let her finish the point that she was making. You interrupted her, have a look at line thirty. She's mid-speech, mid-submission. You don't know what she's going to say in that next sentence, do you? And you interrupted her, didn't you? You interrupted her, you agree with that?
Yes.
And then you go on and, um.
But I'm actually pulling up on another point of order. Because when the chair rules on a point of order. The councillor has an option to then, the next option is not to argue with the chair, but to raise a dissent motion. If she had followed the code of meaning practice, she would have raised a dissent motion, which then would have been dealt with. Should the dissent motion go pass, then councillor, use your words, would have agreed with her. But she didn't raise a dissent motion, she started arguing with the chair.
With her that she should raise a dissent motion?
Where do I?
Where do you?
Um, I refer that she should follow the code of meaning practice.
Where do you raise with her that she should raise a dissent motion?
The, um, it's up to the councillor to raise dissent motion. I've made a ruling as the chair, as the code of meaning practice. They are bound by it as councillors, they've given evidence and they're saying they don't even know the code of meaning practice.
Um, if you were being. A, um, leader or a chair. Um, efficiently running the meeting and skillfully chairing the meeting. If this was a valid point, number one, you would have allowed councillor Caliander to finish her statement?
No, points of order have to be, have to be dealt with as they are called, mid-sentence.
Then said to her, um, point of order. And then either referred her to the, um. Dissent provisions, but what she do is she keep on arguing. And debating with her from the chair, don't you?
Um, she continues, once I've raised the point of order. She then argues, I then pull her up on a further point of order and she continues arguing. And then I'm trying to clarify that point. And she would, she kept on going on. I tried to bring the meeting to order, I invoked another provision of the, of the code of meeting practice. I stood up, our interjection happened by councillor Hagerty and by councillor Caliander in contravention of the code of meeting practice.
And that's because they're frustrated because, A, you're debating as the chair. And B, you're also at points being very condescending towards councillor Caliander, aren't you?
No.
Um, she actually raises that with you, that you're being condescending, doesn't she?
By referring, she does.
You're being patronizing, do you agree with that?
No.
And you're bullying her.
No.
Um, if you were being a skillful chair, if this was a valid, um, point. You would have raised it, um, if she, um. Didn't raise a dissenting motion. Um, then you proceed with what her argument was going to be, but it deteriorated. Into this argument and debate between you councillor Caliander. And with councillor Hagerty at times intervening and making comments.
Yes.
You'd agree it was not an efficient or skillful chairing of this meeting.
Could have been, it could have been better, but in, I guess in three hundred hours of council meetings that I've chaired. Yeah, not, not everyone is going to be as good as it can be. But it does help if councillors read the code of meaning practice and understand it as well.
Um. In this interchange, you were not treating councillor Caliander with respect.
I disagree.
You were bullying her, you were being condescending.
Uh, if I have, if I just.
Do you agree with that or not?
No, based upon, there is no code of conduct lodged, because if there was an issue with my behaviour. Then councillor Caliando should have lodged the code of conduct and that determination should have happened, but none was lodged from my understanding.
Um, did you raise a code of conduct against her?
Um, not that I can recall.
Hmm. Um, and what occurred on, um, an important resolution. You stop a councillor expressing her particular arguments and point of views. Against the, um, resolution, you waste, um. It's about fifteen to twenty minutes time. And then finally she gives up and just says, well, I'm speaking against, I speak against the resolution. So you've frustrated, um, debate between the councillors at a council meeting.
Uh, now I refer back to, I called a council on a point of order, they acted in disorderly fashion. Clarification happened on the matters. I asked the council to withdraw that one word, she chose not to withdraw it, right? I gave her an opportunity to continue her points outside of that comment and to be respectful to staff. And she chose not to.
But her comment was not disrespectful to staff. It was, we should be open and transparent in saying to people. Well, hey, here is a potential upgrade of facilities, but in order to. And then you don't allow her to speak, continue that particular thought process. The particular submission that she was making could have been in terms where she's not being critical of council. She's not being critical of staff.
Well, the transcript shows that she was then implying that council, she was being critical of councillors.
What I'm saying.
Which is, which again is a breach of the, it's an act of disorder under the code of meaning practice.
Um, you do not allow her to finish her submission. And then make, if, if it. And then make, if you want to make an assessment of, um, disorder, to then raise it.
That's in, that's in contradiction of the code of meaning practice. If you bring it back up, I can show you which part.
Um, what I'm talking about is a skillful conduct of, um, a meeting by a chair. Which allows debate between councillors and allow them to express a point. Without being interrupted and then being diverted on, um. Really a waste of, um, her time allocated to speaking for about fifteen to twenty minutes.
You're, you're, you're asking me not to abide by the code of meaning practice?
No, I'm asking you to be skillful and allow her to end that particular thought process. She might have added something which put it in a completely different light, but there was that potential.
Yes, but when points of order are raised, they must be dealt with immediately when the, when the breach happens.
Well, it wasn't a point of order, yours, you were, um, supposedly bringing her to order.
Yeah, the same thing, just semantically different.
Um, well, I don't know about that, but anyway, um.
Yeah, I'm happy to concede that I could have done that better, that will allow us to, to move on. But once again, I've chaired over three hundred hours of council meetings and that's fifteen minutes, to your words of one.
Well, um, we can't unfortunately take you to every, um, council meeting. Um. There are particular examples that I'm taking you to, um. Can you just excuse me?
Looking back on it now. With the concession that you've just made, what might you have done differently?
So the. I raised the issue. She disagrees it, I probably then should have said to her at that point. I could have said to her, if you don't, uh, agree with it, you can move a motion of dissent. But I've taken, referred her down to that path. Then councillors would have voted on it, which then means the matter would have been concluded. As opposed to the time continuing. And if councillors either upheld the point, then. It would be up to her whether to continue to either. Keep the, not withdraw the statement, if she didn't withdraw it, then it would, then it would be further escalation, which is what should be avoided as. So that would only make the situation worse for the long term.
As I understand it from the footage and correct me if I'm wrong, but. Your point was when councillor Caliander said we should be open and transparent, she was. In some way implying that the council had not been open and transparent on this issue, is that right?
Correct.
And that that in some way brought the council into disrepute.
Yes.
Are you familiar with the free speech guideline?
Yes.
Would you take the same approach now in light of the free speech guideline?
Without having read that in detail recently. A little hard.
You can't say at the moment.
I would, I would still lean if, if that were to happen now. As things have happened in recent times of a similar nature. I still probably would have pulled up, it just, it just a, it did not have to be that big because it could have. The councillor can make their point without the implication. Because the implication was admitted later on through the, in the transcript, where she's referring to councillors. And she says that, I think she says something online, well, you can figure that out for yourself, what I mean. But I think that's why. You know, the, the debate should still, um. You know, we have to assume that. Council is transparent every, in everything that it is doing, that needs to be the baseline assumption. Implying against that, what if a councillor has a concern, legitimate, take away from this particular meeting? What if he had a concern that. There hadn't been appropriate consultation or consideration about a particular issue? How does a councillor raise that without getting into the territory that you were concerned about in this meeting? I, I think I would have said something along the lines that, um, this is a. And this is being on the verge of critical but not crossing the line, saying that, uh, we should be, we should be. We should be doing further consultation, we should be ongoing out wider, wider and further. Um, it is a contentious issue, we made that assumption. Um, and I would be more comfortable if, before making a decision, if we consulted further and wider. And therefore I recommend, because this is where I move an alternate motion or a foreshadowed motion. And saying, conduct a further round of consulting. So it's identifying the problem statement and then putting it with a solution, because by not putting a solution to speaking against it. It's being left hanging that we're not being transparent. If there was another situation not in a council meeting, then I would raise it with the CEO. Um, or by email to the staff in, in private.
Um. So your point was that you assume. That the council has been transparent.
That's the baseline, yes.
Um. And if a councillor raises an issue where they don't think the council has been transparent. That's not legitimate?
In, it is legitimate, but it has to be in the right form.
But if the substance is raising a valid criticism of council. That it hasn't been transparent in respect of a particular proposal or a particular transaction. One looks at the substance, you don't look at form in determining whether it's a valid matter to raise.
The substance of the actual comment.
You, you look at the substance of what is being raised.
Mm hmm.
By the councillor, you don't look at form, you look at substance.
Yes, which I think is what happened afterwards in this discussion.
Well, um, can you answer my questions? You agree that you look at substance, not form?
No, we still have to, if you read the, the code of conduct, we still have the, the baseline position. That we should all, to use your, to use your word of form. We have to work on the assumption that the staff are being transparent.
Sorry, that's set out in the code of conduct?
Generally speaking, yes.
Where in the code of conduct?
You can bring it up, I'm happy to go through it with you.
What, what provision in the code of conduct?
Um.
Uh, I N Q dot zero zero one four, zero zero one dot one one three four. Right, where is it?
I have a copy and go through it.
Well, maybe, is there a. Maybe if we go to table of contents, that can guide you.
It's on page twenty five, but is there, is there a hard copy? Because I can do it much quicker, I'll have a hard copy.
I haven't got a hard copy.
Um, we just go through it, scroll through quickly, I can tell you when to stop. One sec, go back up please.
How about we stop? Um, I assume we'll be, because we're going to attempt to sit later than up today. We should have a, I assume, Commissioner, we will be having a break at some time.
Definitely.
What about during the break? Sorry, we will get a copy of the Code of Conduct printed out and you can identify which section yours will fill.
Yeah, we can start at point three if you want to as a, as a beginning.
We'll do it that way.
Yeah.
All right.
One of the functions of the governing body is to, is to keep the performance of the council under review.
Yes.
How does the governing body go about doing that? If it has concerns about the performance of the council organisation? How does it call that, how does a councillor go about calling that issue to attention? Without transgressing the Code of Conduct, as you understand?
The. So I guess we're doing that an ongoing basis throughout the four months of the year. In, say, for example, quarterly budget review, we're looking at the performance of council, you know, in that. Um, there is the probably more, the more uh detailed one is through the CEO and the KPI, the CEO and the performance uh um review panel of the CEO. So there's that mechanism as well, which probably can really drill down into it. And then I guess from, once again, from if councils have a specific issue they wanted to raise. Let's say, for example, going to this pool issue. A councillor can raise a question with notice. I could ask is how many times or what consultation has council staff done on this matter? And then they've started once again from a neutral position. They may have concerns privately, but they ask the question, they get the facts. Then from getting the facts and the report from staff, then they can determine whether their concerns are valid or not valid.
Let's say that they still consider their concerns to be valid after getting the answer. What do they do next?
That, sorry, the, the concerns are valid.
Well, the councillor gets the response to their question and to their mind, they still hold the concern that they had which prompted them to ask the question. What do they do next?
Hmm, this is where, let's say case by case basis. If I look at the concerns that, let's say I personally have, um, I wish I would, I wish they were resolved, but they're still not resolved. Uh, the, um, there was a situation where I was concerned uh with uh elements on, say, contributions and the use of contributions in a timely fashion. Um, after asking the questions, having the meetings, doing the, doing the fact finding part of things, I uh put forward um a, a resolution to council from a, a committee, start looking at resolutions to allow us to have, I guess, a more focused approach to their implementation. And then that was defined by a, by a charter. And that's probably on the, dare I say, on the extreme end of things, um.
Take this, take an example where a councillor is contacted by a number of members of the community concerned about reliability of rubbish collection in their particular part of the LGA.
Hmm.
The councillor wants to put a motion up to get a report uh back to council on what it's doing about those concerns. There's an, a councillor in putting that forward would need to express, wouldn't they, the reason to try and get their support for their motion for the meeting? That is, I've been contacted by a number of constituents who tell me that rubbish collection in their areas is unreliable and
Mm hmm.
and the like. That, that would be something that they would have to inform the meeting on, wouldn't it?
It's probably not, probably not the place for it, because that's probably, it could just be a phone call to.
Well, how does a councillor get support for the motion to get a report back if they don't express the basis of their concern to the meeting?
Oh, sorry, for, for getting, for asking for a report, yes, you would put it, you would put it to the meeting.
So is there a difference in that in your mind? That is that, is that questioning the staff in any way by relaying those reports? Is it suggesting that the organisation isn't doing its job properly? Or is it passing on the concerns of the community?
Well, ultimately, under um, two, three, two, you know, you can, you're, you're, you're passing on the concerns to the gov, councillor, to the governing body. So that's okay, but it says about, I think if you, it's all, then it gets down to a matter of wording of how you were. If you were to say, the staff aren't doing a good enough job, you've, in my opinion, you've crossed the line.
Well, that's a clear example of personal criticism of staff.
Yep.
There's none in the example, nothing like that in the example I posed to you, it's, I have heard reports that rubbish delivery is unreliable. Now, there is an implicit criticism in the way that that's put, but it's not saying staff are not doing their job.
Yeah. I think that, that would probably be on the, on, that would be acceptable.
Um, with the example you just gave, to say something publicly along the lines of staff are lazy, that would be inappropriate?
Uh, yes.
Um, I want to take you to another section of this meeting, um. I think it's INQ dot zero one one dot zero zero one dot zero 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 four.
And I should say, I have done that before and I did apologise for that.
Sorry?
I have done that before and I did apologise.
It's totally inappropriate, wasn't it?
I apologise for the errors of my way.
Um, hold on.
One, I'd like to.
Can you just pause that, maybe if we can just bring up INQ dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one zero five six? Just to orientate. Uh, one oh five six. Uh, so these are the minutes, if we go through to page six. I think it's down the bottom. Uh, can you see this is a motion of urgency um by councillor Green dealing with project control committee?
Yes.
Um. Uh, there's the recommendation and then the council decision. Um, which was in substantially the same terms, but I think with some tweaks. Seek legal advice from general counsel to determine legality and legitimacy of project committee, um. Advice and also advice to address the risk of public perception of councillor conflict interest in councillors being actively involved in the overseeing, monitoring and or allocation and determining any said project or subsequent allocation of section seven point eleven developer contribution funds. Now, if we can go back to the video. Um, if we can go to twenty two point zero four. Yeah.
On another, on another note, I do have an urgency motion, Mr Chair.
Yes, councillor, what is it?
Um, given that this is the last council meeting, scheduled uh meeting of the year, uh I, I would like to uh place a motion for um independent third party legal advice uh if into the status of the project control committee. Um, whilst the committee was uh established to provide oversight and guidance on the design, planning and execution of all council infrastructure projects funded by seven eleven developer contributions. Um, I think it is imperative for independent legal advice to be sought to determine and clarify a number of concerns um to address any possibility that the project control committee could be considered as operational in nature, context, status and further.
All right, stop, and I'll take you forward. Um, can we go to about twenty seven point three zero?
Green, feel free to go for it.
Um, I thought that I had, but um I, I guess it's something that I have not been comfortable with um for quite some time. And at the recent local government New South Wales um conference, um I posed the, the model and a question to um several other councillors and some were mayors. And um asked them would they go to that particular meeting and all, that was all in the negative. So that raised further prop, further discomfort for me. Um, you know, for, for, I can only say that for me to attend that meeting, I need to be assured that um it is, that it is, is legal, that it is consistent um with my councillor role responsibilities and functions, that I'm not being asked to step outside those. But more so um for public perception, um, you know, to, to have that very clear that uh, you know, that if it's in the other way, that no, it's all fine, well then I can, I'll make that argument to people and provide that answer if that is so. At the moment, I am unable to do that, uh which is the, I guess, a key reason, um that, that I would feel much more comfortable in being able to know very clearly that the project control committee is um, is a, is a legitimate and, and legal activity for uh and it's not operational that councillors can be involved in.
So I just got to um, just got to point something out there. So in you asking that, you are implying that the council in establishing the committee has acted outside of its, outside of the act? Because they could, they, they're not, they're not able to establish things that are legal.
I'm not implying that, I'm not implying that. What I, I guess what I'm asking for, the independent legal advice would be, would clarify that and make it really clear as to that, that everything's okay or if there's something that needs to be tweaked or changed for that committee for, to function or to be disbanded, one of the two, that, that, that's what the legal advice would be for, just to make, make sure. But I'm not, I'm not casting any aspersion or implying um that the, you know, that um of, of, you know, that, that it's, it's not, Koshon, I'm just saying for me, I don't feel comfortable and I would prefer to have, be able to stand on solid legal ground that everything's okay.
Yeah, so um just, I, I, I think there's actually, uh, happy, once again, happy to get the advice.
Hmm.
Yeah. More than happy to, but I, council, I just need to, I need you to be mindful in every one of um some of the, the basic reading that we all should do, which is the Act. So under section three seven seven, um, council has issues they can, things they can delegate. What they cannot delegate is, and are quoted exactly, exactly, the voting of money for expenditure on its works, services or operations. So whilst the CEO does have delegation to approve tenders up to a certain amount, which is what it's referring to, he can only spend once we have allocated the money as part of our budgeting process. So contributions is part of that. The CEO cannot say, I want to go out there and build a bridge or build, uh, build a road without council resolving to do that in the first instance. So I think to say, when you're looking at that part of it, like it's blatantly clear in section three seven seven what our role is. And I think I just am concerned that if councils, if councils haven't grasped that. Now, the question is, how would you like to go about doing that? Are you happy?
Um, Mayor, uh, sorry, Mr Manoon, um councillor Green has brought um an urgent notice of motion of a matter that she um is legitimately concerned.
Yes.
Um, and as she has set out in her um argument uh in the support of the motion, she is seeking some clarification.
Yes.
Um, it would appear that she has attended some local government um meeting, has heard some discussion, um, this has raised a legitimate concern in her mind and she is seeking, um, as she sets out some um legal advice from general counsel to make sure that everything is legitimate or if it needs some tweaking or changes that can be done.
No, not from general counsel.
Was it external at the start?
One, external.
Oh. Originally she said external and then ultimately was from the general counsel, the motion that was passed.
Uh, I, I, I don't remember the most motion specifically.
Um, I took it you to it, um, seek legal advice from general counsel to determine legality and legitimacy of the project committee.
How about, that was the motion, okay.
Hmm. Now, um. To then first raise with her that she is implying that council has acted outside of the act um does not arise from her legitimate motion that she's raised. That's quite clear from its terms and from the way that she spoke in favour of the motion.
Yes.
So by stating to her that she, or accusing her that she is implying the council has acted outside of the act, that was um an assertion without a basis.
The.
Do you agree with that or not? Do you agree with it or not, Mr Manoon?
Just replaying the question in my head. Um. I would. I had concerns about this motion with respect to the matter raised and in the, and how it was the, the implication. What she was implying in it um didn't cross, didn't cross the line. But the reality is, um, it was a notice of motion which was checked by the CEO as being lawful, formation of the committee, council resolved that way. So therefore I had made a ruling on lawfulness, a charter was then created.
Now, look, I'm asking about your comment.
Yep.
And what I'm saying to you is that comment was completely unwarranted.
I don't agree.
Again, it's an example of you being a bully in a council meeting of um stating to councillor Green first that she's implying the council is outside, has acted outside of the act. That was bullying.
I don't agree with your um statement.
And then you proceed to some very condescending comments that she needs to be mindful of some of the basic reading that we should do all of the act.
I don't agree with your comments.
Um, then you again continued with being condescending in saying that section three seven seven makes blatantly clear what the councillors' roles are and you're concerned that councillors haven't grasped that. and you're concerned that councillors haven't grasped that. Again, you're being very condescending to a fellow councillor.
I don't agree with that.
Where the councillor has raised what appears to be a very legitimate issue, which ultimately her fellow councillors voted in favour of.
And I think myself as well.
There was no need for the condescending comments about basic reading or it's blatantly clear what councillors' roles are.
No, I disagree with that.
You don't have to express it in those terms. You could, if it was relevant for some reason, you could have just said, I refer you to the Local Government Act and section 377, which sets out councillors' roles.
Yep. I guess the point I was making was...
You could have done it that way, couldn't you, couldn't have you?
To do what exactly?
In the meeting, if you wanted to raise with her that the Local Government Act was relevant and that in particular section 377, setting out the roles of councillors, was relevant, you could have stated that.
Which is what I did, yes.
So what you did is you combined it with condescending comments along lines of a basic reading that we should all do of the Act. It's adding the little adjectives and the niggly little comments, which I'm saying to you are treating a fellow councillor into condescending fashion.
Matters of conduct between councillors, should there be an issue, are dealt with through Code of Conducts.
And that doesn't excuse you at a council meeting where you're the chair and under the code of meeting practice, you were supposed to be dealing with fellow councillors in a respectful manner, to including comments that you're making, as I said, condescending comments to a fellow councillor. There's no need for it.
Well, there is no need for it. In your opinion, it's condescending. No one else has expressed that view to me.
I'm sorry?
Nobody else expressed that view to me. The councillor herself did not do so. And she was fully entitled to do so.
I did. If we get back to my question, there was no necessity for you to add those additional comments if you want to raise, the Act has some relevance here, section 377. There was a way, if it was a legitimate point of raising it, without making the little condescending comments. Do you agree about that or not?
I don't agree the comments were condescending.
Do you agree that there was no necessity to include those comments?
The...
Do you agree that there was no necessity to include those superfluous or additional comments?
So the superfluous words being basic? But generally speaking, no.
Yeah. Would you excuse me?
The superfluousness was the motion itself.
I'm sorry, what?
The superfluousness of this was the motion, in my opinion, itself. I know I subsequently voted for it, but I was happy if a councillor wanted to go into, seek an external opinion again, then I have no issue with that. But my point I was raising is the allocation of funds and that's why I think the advice ended up showing was that, yes.
This committee that stood up and was the subject of this advice, was its role to allocate funds or just to look at better ways of doing that?
Yeah, it was the one I referred to, yes, wasn't to allocate funds.
That's the role of the governing body in its meetings, correct?
Correct.
And so the committee wasn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but the committee's function was to examine ways that the 7-Eleven contributions could be enhanced and used?
Yes.
To make recommendations to the governing body?
And I think the key word is used. Even yesterday, we had a briefing in the governance meeting from the Department of Planning where there was a lot of money held in contributions that should be expended.
I'm alive to the issue, don't get me wrong, but the committee's role was to look at ways that that could be done and then make recommendations to the governing body?
Yes.
The governing body to take up in its function of allocating money?
Yes.
But the committee itself wasn't allocating money?
Correct, yes.
Even if you ultimately voted in favour of the motion, if you were of the view that it was, that the motion was not legitimate or not meaningful, again, that does not excuse your inclusion of those superfluous, of those additional comments when you raise the Act and section 377.
I disagree and you want to go, yeah, if it's about semantics, yeah.
Could you just excuse me? Could you just excuse me? I mean, I'm just trying to pop back. Would you just excuse me for a minute? We bring up another video recording If I can bring it up, Mr Manon, this is the meeting of the 7th of February, but I already took you through that chronology from the probative report, which referred to a rescission motion rescinding the December resolution to sell lots 101 and 102.
Yes.
Do you remember that? And the extract I want to take you to is concerning that rescission motion. Do you need to see the rescission motion or can I just go straight to part of the video?
I don't remember, but just tell me what it is roughly, was it all?
Can you just quickly bring up?
So that resc... So that rescinded the December meeting?
December decided to sell.
Yep. And then they all turned, so I don't need to see that. But I guess, are we going to talk about the alternate motion?
No, we're looking at February where there was a motion to rescind.
Yep.
Let's bring up the motion and we're all clear.
Sorry, we might be at cross purposes.
I'm trying to help save time.
Well, there's a vote in the December to sell and then there's a rescission motion that comes up in February.
Yes.
And I think we're going to the rescission motion in February.
I think is the alternate motion, the motion about more consultation? Is that where we're going?
It rescinds?
Yep.
And then it sets out further consultations to be undertaken?
Yes.
So you remember what we're talking, what I'm referring to?
Yeah, the alternate motion, yes.
In February?
Yes.
Right. Okay. Can we bring up video INQ.069.001.0003? Yeah. Got it, sorry. If we jump to 58.50, just before then?
I'm just asking a procedural question.
Yeah.
Are we going till seven o'clock tonight? I guess if so, what's our break schedule?
We'll have a handful of breaks. Do you need a break now? Is that why you're asking?
If we're going into 10 minutes of discussion, I probably would like a very quick one.
All right, yes, you take a break. I'll remain here, but you feel free to stretch your legs.
Thank you.
You're quicker than I expected.
Just hang on, I think we're still waiting to go back live. And we'll keep an eye on the break situation, but if at any time you need a break beforehand, you just feel free to let me know, okay?
Yes, Mr McDonald.
If we can go, oh, you've gone through to just before 58.50? About 58.40? No, if we could start at about 58.40?
That's the question, are you, did you want to speak for your rescission motion?
I think basically that the consultation with the community was integral to the rescission motion in light of the feedback that I have received and other councils have received, where residents were very upset about a council decision to sell land before consultation was done. Usually in my experience with consultation, you have a proposal which you take to the community, conduct the consultation and then look at how that then informs the decision. You take community with you. In this instance, and the way that the original motion was put before council, it communicated or gave the perception that the sale of the land was going through and then we would consult with residents. And that was the point that people were very, very unhappy with.
All right. Thank you. I'll get to you in a moment, councillor Hadid, just a procedural matter. So councillor, should the rescission motion succeed? So I know it's been brought to my attention that there are very similarities because your motion is talking for, the original motion talks about community consultation. Your motion is also talking for community consultation. And I remember at the last council, we removed the word execute from the contract, so that's from the motion. Therefore, the motion had to come back to council after hearing the family. But under section 10.9 of the Code of Meeting Practice, a motion or an amendment that requires the expenditure of funds must identify the funding source. So I'm just wondering, and just with regards to your motion, if I can just have it be brought up there. So can I just get some clarification? Because number one, it doesn't identify a funding source. When you say direct mail to the residents across Liverpool OGA, do you mean all the residents of Liverpool OGA or just a section of them?
I think because we're talking about public land and rate payers, you know, that's councillors' land, rate payers' land. We're talking about all rate payers. That the consultation, as I have experienced it on this matter, was confined to one particular area. And I think that's the other issue that people have brought up, is that it should not, that the consultation needs to be much broader. I would be interested to hear what the ideas of consultation are in terms of what is proposed over the next three weeks. If we can capture as many, a much broader field than just within the Hammondville or Wattlegrove area, then, you know, that if there's a wider promotion of the issue and of what is actually being put before council, then that may satisfy that we have conducted a robust consultation process.
So can you, just for the purpose of this motion, and so there's no ambiguity, can you define, is there a certain list of suburbs? Or once again, is it all, the whole Liverpool OGA?
I think I was raising the concern there that the consultation that had been, that had occurred was only in two very specific contexts. That needed to be much broader than that in terms of...
Yeah, I get that.
Yep, okay.
So I guess for the purpose of the motion, because what we need to do is work out the amount of money required to do the consultation, which sure, as the original motion, everyone's happy to do consultation. the the amount of money required to do the consultation, which sure, as the original motion, everyone's happy to do consultation, but if you want it broader, you know, where do you stop? Do you stop? Do you go to Chipping Norton? Do you go to Hoxton Park? Do you go to Austro?
If if we can have a broader. A broader social media promotion across the community.
Let me bring it specifically. So you say direct mail. So just with regards to direct mail, how that has to go into, that has to go into letterboxes, being direct mail. Social media is a different thing, that's the next point. Because I just, under the Code of Meeting Practice, we do have to have, we do have to get ourselves a number on this, so. So when you say direct mail, did you want it to, do you have a list of suburbs or do you want every suburb or suburbs within X amount of kilometres? The staff, we just need a way to work it out. Sorry, can you turn on your microphone, please?
Sorry. I understand that. If 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 we're adopting a much broader uh consultation period and and scope of promotion, if it's okay with my co-signees, I'd be happy to withdraw direct mail out from from the from the rescission motion if.
Well, it's fine, I'm happy to do, I just more about, I guess, how far did you want it to go?
Well, I know particularly residents of Moorbank, Chipping Norton, we're very concerned.
Yep.
So if those if those areas could be included in a mail out, otherwise from a much broader social media, I would be happy with that.
Did you want it to jump the river to Cassula, Liverpool CBD, Warwick Farm?
I don't think so. I think maybe, although I know it was the residents of Moorbank that were that were more concerned, but what I'm saying is that if we're going to engage in a much broader. Seven fifty?
Carnes Hill, Part Austro. All right, well, look, there's an easy way to do that.
Mister Mayor, can I can I just ask one thing?
Yep.
We're going at like over and above, I believe, because now.
Councillor, I have to cut you off there because I need to make sure I'm just dealing with the procedural side without actually discussing the merits of the motion. So I just need to procedurally get this right in the first instance. So my point, I know councillor Hadeed has been very patiently. So um, so if you if you were just from a rough, if you want to do South Ward, there's two hundred and sixty thousand residents, there's around, I think roughly eighty thousand dwellings in the LGA, they should be split evenly. So if you then assumed forty thousand dwellings, Chipping Norton has around three and a half thousand dwellings, roughly from my recollection. So if you were to say around between forty to forty five thousand, and just for the purpose of expenditure, you gotta work that out. So forty five thousand dwellings, now you're saying to, you wanted addressed to the rate payer, the person paying the rates of that dwelling?
Yes.
So to the right pay. So if you're renting then, because there's a lot of rate payers, I think thirty percent of Liverpool, I forget the number actually off the top of my head, I'll be but thirty percent rings a bell of people renting or owning, I forget exactly. So I'm just concerned then if you then send a letter. Like I wouldn't, I'm renting, so I wouldn't get it, for example, in Preston's. So. We can do it.
Well, I suspect the person who is paying the rates is a rate payer.
Correct, yep. So but the rate payer, if someone has, someone lives in, if somebody lives in Dulwich Hill, for example, and they own a investment property in Water Grove, the letter would go to Dulwich Hill to that person versus the actual resident living in the area. So do we, I said, do we, yeah. So you're happy for the, so the person, you're happy for to go to the person who pays the rates versus the actual resident in the area?
I prefer the residents in the area.
Yep.
Because they they are the people that will be affected.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
So was that councillor Goodman? Yeah, I guess, yeah. So did you want it working? Because the rate payer is paying the rates.
Well, if that's what.
So, okay.
That's the advice you're giving me then?
No, I'm just just trying to, so if we do a direct mail to rate payers in South Ward, so that's forty thousand dwellings, then if you want it to be, if you want it to then get in plus Chipping Norton, right? And then I guess the only way, because council doesn't have a copy of the electoral roll, so we don't actually know who lives in our LGA, the members of parliament have copies of the electoral. Um, so then you'd have to do an unaddressed mail out to the to the area as well. So if you want to be, if you want to cover rate payers and you want to cover residents, you'd have to probably, you'd have to do both. And it's too hard to work out, which so if you did both, so a forty thousand direct mail out or subject to the final number, and a forty thousand unaddressed mail out. Now, I've been advised from staff, a direct mail out. I've been advised a direct mail out with cost, I don't know if CEO, if you can confirm this, but I've got this from your staff, that your printing setup postage envelope is fifteen cents, postage is a dollar twenty for each one, so you're looking at a dollar thirty five on a CFO.
Look, from experience, it works out to about a dollar fifty, give or take a little bit.
All right.
So I operate, I've always operated on a dollar fifty for direct mail out.
So a dollar fifty times out by forty thousand, we're talking about sixty thousand dollars. Okay, almost there. Thank you for patience, everyone. And an unaddressed mail out, I I would generally use a rule of thumb of fifty cents by the time you put it in an envelope and do all that sort of stuff. Now, you can do it unaddressed, like a junk mail unstamped, yeah, unstamped. So let's just say, being mindful of time, fifty cents, that gives you twenty thousand. Cool. Eighty grand. Are you happy with that, councillor Green? I had to get to that number somehow.
That's that's fine.
To make the motion valid.
That's fine. I just had that on the public record that the intent and the spirit of the rescission motion is purely to ensure that people had the opportunity to be consulted, that none of the consultations that I was present at was the, was the, there was the idea of selling council land part of the proposal. Now, we can dance around at all, you know, all sorts of, let me clarify it, but, you know, at the end of the day.
Excuse me, councillor. Uh, I'm referring, I have to refer you to the section of the Code of Meeting Practice, which I stated before. We now need to identify the funding source for eighty thousand dollars. So if you're if you're referring to what we've just done as a dancing around exercise, I would take offence to that, but I'm not going to assume that you did that.
No, I'm not saying, you know, I mean, you know, I've sat here in this chamber and have met, have had many motions that have been put forward, that have not been attached to any funding source as well. So I'm just saying that could we stop and now jump to one fifteen at about forty four?
A couple of weeks ago, can I ask that this exercise gets done with the councillors and provide them with the support required? So we don't have to go through this process on the floor of council, because there's been a lot of uh discussion regarding this matter, especially in the public domain. And as councillor Green has noted, the consultation is very important, but it's important that a proper motion, when it's put onto the agenda, is legal under section ten point nine of the Code of Meeting Practice.
Just with the twenty second of December.
So it was always twenty second of December.
Twenty second of December, it was launched several weeks ago, just a couple of weeks.
Yep, so this could have been done with staff. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Hadeed. Indeed, you can. Thank you for your patience. Well, my question.
Um. In the December motion that was passed, there was a provision for consultation?
Uh, yes.
Um, there was no funding source identified in that motion for that consultation.
I will, um. Uh, without seeing, I'll accept the yes.
Um, here, what you have spent about twenty minutes on, as you concede, I think when councillor Moon suggests we are going over and above are procedural matters.
Uh, yes.
And procedural matters that under rules three point eighteen, oh, sorry, three point twelve of the Code of Meeting Practice should have been determined by the CEO preparing a report on the source of the funding.
Yes, as part of the agenda.
Yeah. Um, here, the councillor, sorry, the general manager didn't do that.
Yes.
Um, your quizzing of councillor Green, I would suggest was in a rather patronizing manner. You accept that?
No.
Um, it is a matter that could have easily have been resolved first before the meeting by the general manager of the CEO. Um, because, I'm sorry, I withdraw that. As we just heard, councillor Green gave an indication that the notice of motion had been launched a time before the agenda papers went out.
Yes.
So clearly was before, well, should have been in the or should have been a matter considered by the CEO for the meeting.
Yes, that's the point I make at the end.
Um, and so instead of wasting time for about fifteen to twenty minutes and belittling councillor Green in your number of questions, it's a matter that could have been, should have been resolved beforehand?
I disagree with the belittling comment, but yes, it should have been resolved beforehand.
Um, did you, um, did you inquire of the CEO as to why that hadn't been done?
Uh, during that discussion, I think I uh, did.
Um.
Or during the, during the meeting, should I say?
Uh, our note is that after all this nitpicking about whether she wants to jump across the river and the cost of leisure, et cetera, it finalises with, um. Ultimately, the way it was resolved was that there was an allocation of fifty thousand dollars from general funds.
Ninety thousand or fifty? I thought it was ninety.
Uh, five zero in them. So that is a matter that could have been resolved relatively quickly?
No, the the variable in her motion as written was anywhere from twenty thousand to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
Um, should have been resolved beforehand. You agree with that?
Yes, by the CEO.
And could have been resolved in a more expeditious manner during the meeting, except you were trying to belittle councillor Green through your various questions and issues being put to. Do you agree with that or not?
No, because she wasn't answering my questions. I was actually, I was asking analytical questions and she did not respond with the answer. She was referring to the point of wide consultation and I just tried to get it defined in what she viewed it as consultation was the key question at point of the rescission motion.
Um. Throughout, and I hadn't played it all, she's not avoiding questions. She's answering questions and trying, as she said, to get back to the actual rescission motion and intent of the rescission motion, which you were distracting the meeting from for about twenty minutes.
No, because there was not a valid motion on the floor of council.
Um, and the motion was ultimately passed with a resolution that I think it's fifty thousand comes out of general reserve.
Yeah, I think unanimously.
Yeah. But my point is that again, this is another example of you belittling or being condescending to a fellow councillor during a council meeting. You agree with that or not?
No.
Can you just excuse me for a minute? Oh. What was the explanation the CEO gave as to why he hadn't done the work of pricing it? Or the amount that was required to be paid for the consultation before the meeting?
My recollection is more that it was just an acknowledgement that, yeah, we should have done it.
Sorry?
I said, my recollection was that it was more an acknowledgement that, yes, we should have.
By the CEO?
Yes.
Did you ask him at the meeting why he hadn't done it?
I think it was more along the lines of, yeah. It's more should have been done.
But the answer to my question is he didn't ask.
I don't have a specific recollection.
Um, the the sale of lots one and two were, um. I think ultimately they were sold and the funds have gone into some kind of internally restricted account.
Reserve.
Reserve, thank you. And that's an internally restricted reserve, which is looking at or to be used for the development of some kind of recreation centre at Hammerville Park.
Yes.
Which will include an aquatic centre.
Yes.
Now, dealing with aquatic centres, in February twenty twenty two, there was a report by Warren Green Consulting to the council, dealing with Liverpool Aquatic and Leisure Centre Provision Implementation Priority Plan.
Yes.
Um, and as part of that, they looked at a number of, well, all of the pools that were available throughout the local government area.
Yes.
And that included, um, the current pool at Hallsworthy.
Yes.
And the current pool at Hallsworthy, it's part of the Hammerville Park?
No.
Is located nearby?
Yes.
So if you're looking at facilities available to the community round the Hammerville Park area, the pool at Hallsworthy is one of the facilities it's available to.
Yes, to an extent. It has a different operating model than the other pools.
But it's a pool that's operating. People can go and swim in the twenty five metre pool.
There's only, I think, one lane allocated to that in the pool.
People can go and swim in the pool, can't they, Mr. Manu, at Hallsworthy?
Yes, not like the other pools.
And as part of the Warren Green Consulting Report, in respect of Hallsworthy, um. Warren, just trying to find the appropriate section. Um. They. Excuse me. Excuse me. Um, if we can bring up INQ dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one 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 three. And this can be live streamed. Uh, if you can go through to page twenty-seven to begin with. You can see, this was just the easiest way to get, bring up a copy of it. You can see that's the first page if we just move a little bit down the page of the Warren Green Consulting. Maybe just, if we can show the heading. Yes, perfect. Um. And if we go through to page thirty-three. Under key recommendations. In respect of Holsworthy Aquatic Centre, and that's the Holsworthy Pool, it's talking about, it is noted that while a review is ongoing, there may be potential for a sale of the centre and this should be um explored further. And the reference to the study is a reference to um a feasibility study of the Holsworthy Aquatic Centre.
Some whereabouts on the page are you, Mrs McDonald?
Can you see under key recommendation C?
Yes, thank you.
Um, that was the case?
I'm, I'm not aware of feasibility.
Right. If we jump back to page thirty. Can you see towards the bottom of the page, there's Holsworthy Aquatic Centre Feasibility Study?
Yes.
And you've got a short-term feasibility study, um a dilapidation report, probable cost to upgrade, undertake minor accessibility works, et cetera.
Yeah, it says alternate sites and consider gym and all that, yes.
And then a longer term feasibility study of preparing a design and management plan for an alternative site, um et cetera.
Yes.
Um, so as part of this report, unlike some of the other um swimming pool or aquatic centres, where there has been a master plan dealing with them and um an identification of what, what is proposed to be done with, for example, um the Witlam Leisure Centre, uh to be replaced with a greenfields development, um Michael Clarke Recreation Centre, master plan in conjunction with two other centres, et cetera. So what I'm suggesting to you in this report, um there is no immediate proposal um to replace um the Holsworthy Pool. It's a matter of feasibility studies looking at, can we do anything in the short term? That is, um, undertake minor accessibility works, et cetera.
Yeah.
And then a longer term, looking for an alternative site.
The short term was after that point, the next one says conduct a feasibility size of alternate sites in East, to consider gym and blah blah, investigate funding options and potential development partners, include all along, yes.
So you agree with what I've said to you. In this um report, there was no recommendation that there, that there should be a new Holsworthy Pool at a particular site, let alone costing for such a pool.
Oh. I'd have to go through the whole report, but it clearly envisages an alternate site with improvements to it.
Yeah. But there is no recommendation in this report that the new site or an alternative site is X?
I, I haven't read this report in an extremely long time, but I'm, I'm assuming in that, in those final two sentences, it's referring to the whole, the work that we did at Hammerville Park.
Right, the work on Hammerville Park is later.
Uh, twenty nineteen?
Um.
Twenty twenty?
It's after, well, the work on Hammerville Park isn't referred to in this report. And it, what I'm, the proposition, if not distracted, is that in this report, there is no identification of this is the alternative site or Holsworthy Park and this is what it's going to cost.
I, I, I said I haven't read this report in a very long time, so I'm.
Um, and. In twenty twenty-two and in twenty twenty-three, there was no resolution by council that um a pool will be built to replace the Holsworthy Pool at this cost.
And I don't think. Not sure of anything specific. Don't think there was anything specific about cost, but there were resolutions and adopted master plans for Hammerville.
And what I want to suggest is the Hammerville Master Plan is um after uh in the latter part of March twenty twenty-three?
A version of it, but there was one earlier than that.
Um, but you agree there is no resolution that a pool be constructed at a particular site by council?
I think there's, there's a resolution in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and.
Sorry, what's the resolution?
About Hammerville Park and improved facilities there. And I think.
Resolution? You weren't even on council then, were you?
Uh, no, but I.
So what was the resolution?
Look for it in the break and bring it up, but I'm sure there's, there are resolutions. There's a further report that came to us about this project, which outlined all the different resolutions there were in the lead up to that, in that, in that decade. And yes.
Um.
And there were, there were discussions, documents drawn between Liverpool City Council and the Moorbank Sports Club about construction of a pool at that site, which were ongoing discussions with the then CEO Eddie Jackson.
Um, but no resolution of council?
No, no, I said there was, my understanding resolutions in that nineteen, twenty period.
Well, you just said there's a document that um Dr Jackson was discussing with Moorbank Sports Club about the construction of a swimming pool. My question to you was that didn't result in any resolution of council, did it?
I'm not sure. But I know there were on, there were significant discussions with Moorbank Sports Clubs, whether Moorbank Sports Club was there. Yeah, there's a lot of correspondence back and forth about that issue.
But again, no resolution of council that we accept a proposal by Moorbank Sports Club to build this pool?
Uh, yes.
You agree there's no resolution?
I'm fairly, I'm fairly certain there's no resolution.
Um. Can we bring up please INQ dot zero one one dot zero zero one dot zero 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 five? Be live streamed, find it. Uh, you know this article in the Sydney Morning Herald?
Not specifically. I'm aware of an article in the Herald.
Um, in it, if we keep on moving down the page, um it refers to um an announcement, a joint announcement by you um and your wife, who was at that stage the Liberal candidate for Holsworthy, um in which um you committed or you committed twenty-eight million dollars in, in um council funds um for a state-of-the-art um aquatic centre at Holsworthy.
Can we, can I read the whole article, please?
So the package was to also upgrade Phil, Fields, I'm sorry, but develop a new aquatic centre announced by the duo at a sports club last Sunday. And you had then Rhodes Minister Natalie Ward representing the government at the announcement?
Uh, yes.
Um, you made that announcement at that sports club?
Sorry, can we read the other pages? I'm still reading the article.
Well, no, 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 sorry. The other question, other pages I'll get to, but I'm asking you about what is recorded there that at a sports club um last Sunday, um after the Liberal Party's official campaign, sorry, um, at a sports club last Sunday, after the Liberal Party's official campaign launch at the Liverpool Catholic Club, you made an announcement of committing um twenty-eight million dollars to the um project of new aquatic centre plus upgrading some fields?
I, I need to be taken to what I said.
Oh.
Please.
Um, if you go back to the beginning of the article, can you go back to the beginning? It records that you joined your wife and Liberal candidate to commit twenty-eight million dollars in council funds for a state-of-the-art precinct in the electorate if the coalition is returned to government next Saturday. Now implicit in that is that you announced at this meeting that you were um committing twenty-eight million dollars in council funds for this project. Are you saying that you didn't do that?
I, I'm yet to finish reading the article and I don't see anything quoting.
No, no, I'm referring you to that part where it reports that you um joined your wife um at this event and committed twenty-eight million dollars in council funds for the project.
I.
Are you denying that you did that?
I, I would like to read the whole article to see what I actually said.
Mr Manu, I have taken you to the part of the article which records what um the article records you stating.
I do. This is in effect a lead-in paragraph in an article, to not put in direct quotes. The witness is asked to read the article, which is absolutely fair enough. Um, this is something that happened, you know, should be given the opportunity to see or at least taken to him if there is anywhere in the article where the Herald puts in direct quotes that he has used words in my submission.
Um, I withdraw the question. Did you at a campaign launch with your wife, um when she was standing for election um at Holsworthy, commit council funds of twenty-eight um million dollars to the project?
Um, that, no, because I can't commit funds on behalf of councils.
Um, did you announce at this um meeting that the council would um contribute twenty-eight million dollars to the project?
I don't have a specific recollection, but if you can take me to it, I'm happy to look.
Asking you about your recollection.
Okay.
My, I'm asking you, do you recall at this meeting saying anything about the council will contribute to this project, twenty-eight million dollars?
Uh, I don't have a specific recollection.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I remember speaking about the Holsworthy um master plan uh and uh I guess my commitment that I made to the community, uh and I think my mayoral minutes when I first got elected.
Did you say at this meeting that there was um going to be a contribution by the council towards the project?
I don't have a specific recollection of exactly what I said.
Do you have a recollection of whether you specified an amount of money that the council would contribute to the project?
Uh, not specifically, no.
Um, if that was the case that um you, sorry, I withdraw that. Um, there was no um resolution of council whereby any amount of funds were to be um allocated for the Holsworthy Aquatic Centre.
Sorry, what was the question?
There was no resolution by council as at um the end of March twenty twenty-three, that X amount of money will be allocated to the Holsworthy Aquatic Centre project. that X amount of money will be allocated to the Holsworthy Aquatic Centre project.
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
And to announce that council would contribute twenty two or twenty eight million dollars to such a project would be inappropriate, wouldn't it?
Do you, I don't see myself announcing that. I don't know, I don't see myself announcing.
I'm not asking you that. Listen to the question, try and listen.
Mm hmm.
I, I, this has been put as an assumption, should be clearly overshadowed to the witness. He's been giving evidence all day. It's not, it's not clear in my expressly, if X happen, do you accept Y?
Yeah, that should happen. That should have.
I'm sorry?
That should happen. Given the answers, the previous answer.
If as, assume that um, a mayor made an announcement of X amount of dollars is being um, contributed to a project in the absence of a council resolution that such money would be allocated, would be inappropriate, wouldn't it?
You, I, I, a mayor cannot allocate funds. They can advocate to put funds, they can put it to council for resolution. Right? And you can say, I'm going to be advocating to get this through council. You know, that's, everyone's entitled to do that.
So the answer to my question is it would be inappropriate. Yes, it would be.
Uh.
Yes.
Breaches of the Act would be inappropriate, yes.
Um, and you're denying, I'm sorry, withdraw that, you have no recollection at this, do you remember the, the launch with your wife for her candance candidacy to stand for Holsworthy?
Vaguely.
Right. You remember that the Rhodes Minister, Ms. Ward was present?
I remember her present at an event with her.
And um, you had no recollection of um, announcing at this meeting that um, council would be contributing to a jointly with the New South Wales Government um, X amount of money to the Holsworthy Aquatic Centre project?
Uh, I don't have anything specific or specific wording of what I actually said.
What I'm asking you, Mr. Manon, I'll try again, is your evidence is you do not have a recollection of saying that at that, at this event?
Yes, I do not have a recollection of the exact words that I said at that event.
Um, we haven't discussed breaks.
Think we should have one.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes?
Yes.
Counselor will take a break for fifteen minutes. Feel free to stretch your legs, get some fresh air, and I'll review them again at twenty five past four. Yes, Mr. Andrews.
Commissioner, can I just raise a matter of housekeeping? Earlier today, the witness was taken to the thirteen December twenty twenty three council meeting, and I raised that something may be subject to confidentiality claim. Uh, I can confirm that neither the video nor the transcript document IDs, which are L C C dot zero two four dot zero zero one dot triple zero one for the video and INQ dot zero nine one dot zero zero one dot triple zero five are the subject of claim for confidentiality or an application pursuant to section twelve A.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Manon, you first met um, Jason Breton around June twenty twenty one?
No.
When did you first meet him?
In two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty?
And in what circumstances did you first meet him?
I was introduced to him uh, by a gentleman by the name of Arvind Lu, Arvind Lal.
Uh, could you spell that, please?
A R V I N D D Lal, L A L.
That meeting didn't occur in twenty twenty one?
No.
Right. Um, were you introduced to Mr. Breton by Mr. Lal?
Yes.
And this was um, before, yeah, I'm sorry, withdraw that, at this stage, you were not a councillor?
Yes.
Um. The circumstances in which Mr. Lal introduced Mr. Breton to you, um, was it a, by chance meeting or was it organised?
Uh, organised.
Organised by Mr. Lal?
Yes.
Um, how lo-, how did you know Mr. Lal?
Mr. Lal was a former manager at Liverpool City Council.
In which area was he a manager?
I think waste.
Sorry?
Waste.
Oh, waste, sorry. I thought you said west.
Oh.
That's why I looked confused. All right, um, so by the time this meeting was organised, Mr. Lal had left, to your knowledge, left the employment of the council?
Yes.
And um, what was the purpose of the meeting?
I think it was twofold at the time. Um, one was, um, there's a, there was a share, a shared um, enthusiasm of getting a football team, oh, I'll say for Liverpool, not for South West, for Liverpool, um.
And when you say football team, we're talking soccer?
Yes.
Hmm?
And um, I think discussions around uh, trains and metro train s-trains.
Um. And did anything result from the meeting?
Um, other than getting to meeting someone new, that's pretty much.
Okay, um. So the twofold purpose to share your enthusiasm, was it to establish a new soccer team? Is that what you were looking?
Uh, yes. And I think, think there were also discussions regarding waste and recycling. Is that something that my family has been involved in for a while and, and I think, yes.
All right, so the, the result of the meeting was that you've met some, you've been introduced to a new person? Um, and you share an enthusiasm for a soccer team, correct?
Yes, and I think, sorry, at the time, I think there was, there was a, uh, I think, my timing, the, the A League was going through a process of getting a new team in the South West.
That what led to Macarthur.
Yes.
Um, so after that.
Sports other than cricket teams.
I, I was gonna make, I was gonna make a comment, but decided not to. Um, all right, so after that meeting, when did you come across Mr. Breton again?
I, I think in early twenty one?
What circumstances?
A catch-up, I don't think there was. I don't remember any specific topic of conversation.
Um, and when you say a catch-up, you attended the catch-up?
Yes.
Mr. Breton?
Uh, yes.
And did Mr. Lal?
Hmm, no, no. No, I don't think so.
Uh, what can you recall was discussed at this catch-up in early twenty twenty one?
I think it was around the, the bid for the, for the soccer team. Or the results of the bid, I forget. Hmm.
Uh, at some time during twenty twenty one, um, did you have another catch-up or meeting with Mr. Breton? And at this time, he was um, unemployed?
Uh, yes.
When was that roughly?
I think mid twenty one, or I think it's in between contracts versus unemployed.
He wasn't working?
Yeah, as in waiting to go to another, something was starting or something along those lines.
Um. And at this, a- and who attended this meeting? It was obviously you and Mr. Breton. Was Mr. Lal there?
No, I don't believe so.
Anybody else?
Hmm. No, in Ju-, in June, no, I don't think so.
Um, and at this meeting was um, your um, decisions to stand again for council discussed?
Yeah, yes.
Um, and as Mr. Breton wasn't working at the time, um, was some kind of suggestion made that he would work on your campaign?
Yes.
Right. Um, who raised that? Who suggested it?
Uh, me.
You suggested to him, if you got some time spare, why don't you work assisti-, work on my campaign?
Yes.
Um, by that stage, had the campaign office, I think at Terminus Street been opened?
E, yes, I think so.
What was Mr. Hart's role in your uh, election campaign twenty twenty one?
Um. Yes, it sort of evolved from first meeting him. Um. To, to, he effectively became campaign director or one of the campaign directors. Um, initially, um, he um, was basically, he was doing modelling and data analytics.
That was at the campaign office?
Uh, yes.
Um, and you said over time, he became your campaign director?
Yes.
All right, so um, mid twenty, uh, mid twenty one, you have this further catch-up or meeting with Mr. Breton, and you suggest to him, why don't you, if you've got spare time, why don't you come and assist on my campaign?
Yes.
All right, um, he. Um, do you in, so assist up in your campaign? Do you suggest that he contact anybody or just rock up to the campaign office, or what did you suggest?
I think just turn, turn up, meet at the office.
Did you give him Mr. Hart's name?
I think you met him there.
When you arrived at the office?
Yes.
So you didn't say to him, this is the address of the office, um, ask for Matthew Hart?
No.
Um.
Don't believe so.
When he um, turned up to the office, were you there?
I assume so, yes.
You say, I assume so. Do you have a recollection of him being there when he arrives for the first time?
Uh. Can I think back exactly, but I would say yes.
Um, now. Excuse me for a minute. Now. In evidence before the inquiry, there's a text message, um, from Mr. Hart to Mr. Breton um, on the twenty second of June, where he sends him um, a headshot of you.
Yes.
Um, the date of the, a- a- and also um, refers to a Google Drive, so I can add you to our shared folder. So that message was sent on the twenty second of June. Um, that would suggest that Mr. Breton is working on your campaign by the, by at least the twenty second of June?
Yes.
Um. The work that he was doing on your cam- campaign, um, what worked to your knowledge, I'm sorry, I should start again. Um, in twenty twenty one, in a sense, there were two campaigns. There was the campaign when the election was going to be held in September. And then COVID cancelled that election, and then the election was subsequently held in December. Do you remember those two stages?
Yes, I'd say there's three stages.
Right, you say three.
Yep.
What's your third stage?
The pre-selection, or I becoming the candidate.
All right, and the pre-selection, um, that's a Liberal Party pre-selection?
Yes.
Um, was that undertaken for the election that was planned originally for September?
Yes.
And when did you get pre-selection?
August.
Right. Right. Um, but. Um. But even though, if you're saying you were pre-selected in August, um, there was already a campaign office in June, operating in June?
Yes.
Um, you were going to obviously nominate for the, um, to be the mayor or candidate?
Yes.
Did anybody else from the Liberal Party stand for that?
Yes.
Who was that?
Uh, Mr. Peter Rusevsky.
In twenty twenty one?
Yes.
Was he still a member of the Liberal Party then?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um. But. In, um, June and July, um, Mr. Breton is performing, um, work on, um, your potential campaign.
Yes.
Um, if you didn't get the mayoral pre-selection, um, you also seek pre-selection for a councillor position?
Yes.
Um, was, were you, in a sense, definitely going to get a councillor position or again was that contested?
Uh, contested.
Well, August to September seems like a fairly short running councillor. Is that, is it always that tight?
Um, the biggest gripe, yeah, the biggest gripe we have is getting pre-selected early. And, um, there's a significant amount of logistics required for log government preselections based on sheer quantity. So it does sometimes take a bit longer, but we all hope that we can get it done early. I'm just trying to remember my previous one when it was done. How many months, how about?
That's all right. Nothing much turns on it. It was just curious as to the timing.
Well, you, so you were pre-selected for the election that was going to originally take place on the fourth of September?
Was it the fourth? It was the fourth of December.
No, no, no. Do you remember I said to you?
To you.
There was an elec-, a local government election called and it was going to be, um, held on the fourth of September. And then it was cancelled because of, or postponed because of COVID and the postponed date was December.
Uh, yes, but I think all elections are held on the second Saturday of September as by, but regardless, for the early September.
Remember if the pre-selection was finalized after the postponement had been announced by government?
I don't, but I can.
Sorry. It's my curiosity.
Um.
In any event, there was one scheduled for September. It was deferred due to COVID and.
To December.
That happened.
Um, but in June and July, Mr. Breton is, um, working on your potential campaign?
Yes.
Um, part of the work that he's been undertaking was to, um, identify key themes for your campaign?
It's more managed logistics.
No, do you remember him identifying key themes for your campaign and drafting letters? Um, articulating those key fat things?
I remember him doing that. That's not what he was doing.
Not asking you that. I'm asking you about what work he was doing and you recall that he was doing some of that work?
Yes.
Um. And you were actually, um, sent, uh, i- if we can bring up please, um, har dot zero zero four dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one? Copy. If you bring up har dot zero zero four dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one. Oh.
Um, page one.
Uh, page five, please. Um, you can see there on the second of July, um, Mr. Breton emails you and also Mr. Hart. Um, reliverpool debt and N M letters, key themes and five letters documents.
Yes.
Um, and if we go to page six? Um. These were the various letters, um, with particular themes and key points that he'd written?
Uh, uh, yes.
And then if you, if we go to page seven, this is an example of one of the draft letters that he, um, written, which was dealing with theme number one debt.
Uh, yes.
And then if you go to page nine, you can see their letter to, this is introducing, um, Ned Munne. Um, and that was, um, the theme number two in his, um, original table.
Uh, yes.
Um, so that was some of the work that, um, Mr. Breton was undertaking at this time in, uh, July twenty twenty one?
Yes.
Uh, and then, I don't think it's necessary for me to take you to this. Mr. Hart sends back his feedback to you and Mr. Breton about the draft letters.
Yes.
Now. Um, also. Uh. There's, um, evidence of Mr. Breton, um, I think in one of the rooms at the office, putting, um, brown paper round the sides of the wall and setting out kind of a timetable for the election.
Yes.
Um, the idea being that particular relevant dates, um, what you have to do or what should be, um, achieved by particular points are going to be put on this like a chronology leading up to the election.
Yes.
Now. Um, as part of the strategy leading up to the local government election, um, you and Mr. Hart were trying to identify a person who would stand as an independent?
What was the first part you heard prior?
Trying to identify a person who would stand for election as an independent.
Uh, yes, I had identified somebody already.
Yeah, I'm taking it in stages.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, so you agree with me that, um, you were, um, identifying a person to stand as an independent in the local government election?
Yes.
Um, and in June or July, you had identified a person?
I think earlier than that, but yes.
Who was that person?
Um, Mr. Gary O'Neill.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Um, ultimately in the December election, he didn't stand as an independent?
Yes, correct.
Um. And you raised with Mr. Breton that, um, sorry, at some time, and it may have been after Mr. O'Neill decided not to stand as an in- independent, you raised with Mr. Breton the potential for him to stand as an independent?
Yes.
Um. When did you do that?
Don't have a specific recollection.
After Mr. O'Neill said no?
Mr. O'Neill never said no.
Oh, you decided not to run with Mr. O'Neill?
Um. Ultimately, the, the ball was, I guess, in his court, you know?
The what? Sorry?
The ball was in his court.
Yeah.
As in the, he was identified because he's a long-term Liverpool resident.
Mm-hmm.
Or, sorry.
Yeah.
Associated with the area, didn't live in there specifically, but associated there. He used to have a, well, he does have a carnival ride business. So anyway, um.
But I'm sorry, I'm asking you, did he decide not to run or what was the issue?
I guess once again, it was how enthusiastic he was about it.
All right.
He was saying, yes, 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 but ultimately got down to what actions he puts behind that.
All right. Um, and is this round, when he's not showing that enthusiasm, you raise with Mr. Breton the potential for him to stand as the independent?
No.
Sorry?
No.
What? Um, did you, I thought you gave evidence that you raised it with Mr. Breton?
Yes, I did.
When did you raise it with him?
The, I don't specifically remember. What I remember though is in the, the context that I raised it. Uh, as in, if you care and want to do so much, well, have you considered becoming a councillor? Have you considered running? And that's not something uncommon for me to, to do.
Um, I'm sorry, what was the last part you said?
That's not something uncommon for me to do.
Um, but with Mr. Breton, you knew that he was sympathetic to some of the campaign issues that you were going to run on?
Yes.
Um, and also you, um, understood that, um, he would, um, give your, his preferences to the Liberal Party?
Without splitting hairs, yes.
Um, excuse me for a minute?
Now, I guess what I mean by splitting hairs, ultimately it's not for him to give preferences. It's to make recommendations to give preferences.
Um, you are splitting hairs. You know on his how to vote, um, card, it has, um, vote one Breton and the people standing on his ticket. And then the first preference he gives on his, um, how to vote card is to the Liberal Party.
Having, having seen it in recent times.
Hmm.
It doesn't actually tell anyone to vote for the Liberal Party.
What it does is it sets out Mr. Breton's tickets, suggestion to people as to how to vote, correct?
Yes, and it says vote one Jason.
Correct or not?
Yeah, it says vote one Jason.
And it then indicates number one in the box with Mr. Breton. It then indicates number two, the Liberal Party, doesn't it?
I think it has a number two written.
Yeah, it does.
But doesn't actually say to people, place a number two in the box.
And Mr. Munne, you understand that when somebody is given a how to vote card, what that how to vote card is suggesting, this is the way that you, we suggest that you vote. If you want to vote for us, you tick one in the, um, Jason Breton box and you put number two in the Liberal Party box.
Yeah, so they have on them, place a number one in, it says follow the instructions. Place a number one in this box.
Yep.
And then you would have another arrow saying, fill in the boxes or as instructing people to fill in the boxes as shown, or place a number two here.
So it's giving the preferences to the Liberal Party?
Yeah, but it's instructing them.
Hmm.
Uh, I've seen many, I've probably seen too many how to votes in my lifetime. Uh, but there is normally a clear in an optional preferential system, a clear direction to the voter, to fill in the boxes. And number one here, number two or whatever.
So he's not suggesting to them that they fill out Labour Party for number two, was he?
No, I don't actually says, I don't think actually says put number two.
He wasn't suggesting that they should vote for the Labour Party number two, was it?
No.
Um, now, excuse me for a minute? Uh, if you bring up please, oh, excuse me. Har dot zero zero three dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one? Would you just not live? Um, you got it? We try page eleven before you live stream it. There is a redaction. Terrific. It can be live streamed. Now. Um, this is dated, I think sometime in October twenty twenty one. Um, can you see that Mr. Breton is texting Mr. Hart saying, am I running? As Ned suggested this once, but nothing since. I'm happy to. Send me the ball, mate. And Mr. Hart responds with, I'm pretty sure he wants you to, but we're just flat chat, getting the campaign moving.
Yes.
Um, so that reflects that you had suggested it once. And when Mr. Hart says he's pretty sure he wants you to, that, um, is consistent with your recollection. That you wanted Mr. Bre- Breton to run.
Well, I suggested it and then did nothing since.
Well, what I'm asking you, if you can listen to my question, Mr. Hart says, I'm pretty sure he wants you to.
Hmm.
Is, 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 was that the position that you were, that you wanted Mr. Breton to run? Or has Mr. Hart got it wrong?
Well, he's, he's assuming that's what I want.
No, asking you that. Mr. Hart has said, I'm pretty sure he, Ned wa- I'm pretty sure Ned wants you to, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, was that the case that you? Um, was that the case that you wanted Mr. Breton to run?
The, in the context of who would be a better councillor between himself and.
I, I'm just asking.
Mr. O'Neill.
Were you of the view that um, did you want him to run? Did you or didn't you?
I preferred him over Mr. O'Neill.
So the answer to my question is, yes, I wanted him to run.
I, um, say yes.
Um, and then as Mr. Hart says, reach out to Ned to set a time for a meeting to discuss tactics, signing of forms, et cetera.
Yes.
And Mr. Breton did contact you to set up a time for such meeting?
I don't have any specific recollection, only a vague one.
Um. Now, Mr. Breton, though agreeable to stand um as an independent, um has concerns throughout the campaign, campaign about money.
Yes.
Um, his first question to Mr. Hart was, well, what's the nomination fee?
Uh, I think that was shown, yes.
And um Mr. Hart responds, um at this stage, Ned will guide his donors towards you if you decide to nominate. And the cost can be offset from that.
Yes.
Um, and that's the case, you did guide um some of your donors towards Mr. Breton?
Uh, no.
You didn't guide any of your donors towards Mr. Brett?
I, I don't have donors.
Um, what do you have?
Um. Bring, a, a good understanding of people's political views in the area.
Mr. Manon, um. You had people within Liverpool City Council area who were willing to provide some financial assistance to you, the, as part of your campaign.
Um. No, I don't think I took any.
No, I'm not asking whether you took anything. What I'm asking you is that there were people within the Liverpool Council area who were willing to donate money towards your campaign.
Uh, yes.
Hmm. Um, and what you did as part of the campaign um with those people who said something like, Ned, you terrific, want to help you out, donate some money. What you did in respect of some of those people is that you suggested you should donate to Mr., to Jason Breton's campaign.
Uh, no.
Never did that?
Not in that context.
Right, in what context did you?
So if, if people were, I guess, willing to donate, then I would have recommended them to go to the Liberal Party in the first call.
Yeah. And then with some of those people, um you told them or suggested to them that they should donate to Mr. Breton's campaign.
Hmm, no.
Are you denying that?
Yes.
Um, so page twelve of H A R dot zero zero three dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one. Um, Mr. Hart is mistaken, is he? When he says, from my understanding, at this stage, Ned will guide his donors towards you if you decide to nominate.
No.
Mr. Hart's incorrect, is he?
Yes, I don't have donors.
Um. You have people who um say to you that they are willing to um contribute to your campaign financially?
Uh, no.
You don't have people saying to you, I would like to contribute to your campaign financially?
Yep, my recollections, I self-funded my campaign.
No, I didn't ask you that, Mr. Manon. Please try and listen to the question. You had people who said to you, I would like to contribute financially to your campaign.
Not specifically, no.
Nobody ever said that to you? I would like to contribute to your campaign?
Uh, campaign fundraising isn't that, isn't that easy?
No, I'm not asking you that.
Yeah.
Nobody ever said to you, in the campaign leading up to December twenty twenty one, I would like to contribute to your campaign financially?
I don't have a specific recollection of someone doing that.
Um. Now. The plan was that Mr. Breton wouldn't stand as a single independent.
Yes.
Um, he had to have a ticket.
Yes.
And you assisted in um finding some people to stand on his ticket?
So, yes.
Um, I think Mr. Hart's parents stood.
Uh, yes.
Ticket. And there were two other, I think there were two other people who were either friends or associates of you, of yours.
Yes.
And you organised for them to stand on the ticket?
N- not specifically, no.
You didn't speak to them about it?
I think the I.
Did you speak to them about it?
Yes.
Um, did you say to, did you suggest to them that um it would be a good idea or could you stand as a ticket on this um independence candidate's ticket?
My recollection is that they checked with me about, you know, what do you think of this? I think the, the proposition had been put on by Matthew Hart at the time. And they checked with me and said, well, what do you think? And I gave them my opinion.
Right, and I think Mr. Hart's evidence might have been different. My recollection of his evidence was that um at least two of the people who were on the ticket were nominated or, or were bought on board by you.
Um, so I, I, in the secondary fashion, in the secondary fashion, yes.
Not in a secondary fashion, you were the one who contacted them and organised for them to be on the ticket.
No.
Um. Now. One of the difficulties with Mr. Breton standing as a candidate in Liverpool City Council, um local government election, is that he's not a resident.
Uh, yes.
Um, it had to be organised that he go on the non-residential role.
Yes.
Um, and the person who nominated him um as the representative of the particular business so he could go on the role was um Asam Dabach. B A double B A G H.
Dabach.
Dabach?
Yes.
He's a friend of yours?
Uh, yes.
Um, you organised for him to be the nominator of Mr., of Mr. Breton, Mr. Breton, I'm sorry, onto the um uh non-residential role.
Hmm, I don't recall.
Possibly you did that?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if he's actually the nominee.
Sorry?
I'm not sure he is the nominee, Mr. Brett.
Um, Commissioner, I have some more questions on this part. But I wasn't expecting the resistance, which means I've got to go back and locate some documents. Um, after this topic, there are a couple of small topics to complete. Um, Mr. um, um Manon's evidence. Um, I think I might speak for Mr. Manon, who's been yawning a bit.
Yes.
I've been on my feet all day.
Yeah.
Um, we have an eight o'clock start tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
What I was going to suggest is that we pull up stumps now and resume at eight um A M in the morning.
Okay, we're gonna finish?
Um, I'll finish. Um, relatively, uh, I've, a- after Mr. Breton's evidence.
How long with Mr. Breton, do you think?
Um. You just explain. Mr. Breton has to go by nine thirty.
Okay, so that.
That gives us the time limit there. Um, and I'm sorry, there was a question that Manon had bring, raised before um you came onto the, the bench, that is what time. Should Mr. Manon be here tomorrow? I think maybe about twenty past nine.
To start it immediately after Mr. Breton?
Yes.
Is that you can be here at twenty past nine tomorrow? Yes. All right.
Um, and then um Mr. Manon's the, I, I think the only witness for tomorrow.
And that's it?
Yep.
All right. Well, um, I take it you won't object to finishing now, so I'll let you go. Um, with my thanks for a very long day. I'll see you again tomorrow um at about twenty past nine, or I might see you at about nine thirty. But you're free to go for the rest of today. Thank you. So I'll adjourn until eight o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
We might be able to order coffees in.
On an I D, perhaps. Um, anything else to do this afternoon? Or I'll adjourn until eight AM tomorrow. Thank you.